The decision on the Grisma was vacated, it was remanded to the board basically.
So Steve, the first item tonight is just reading of this. Is it okay to just do that and?
No, I don't, I don't.
You guys are second.
We don't read that at that way.
We moved you out, a finding is a fact.
We can ask Amy.
Not you, we moved you out one to give you time.
Vacated and the matter remanded.
Okay.
To deny the application.
Oh, I didn't read the top part.
The entry shall be.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, that needs to go on the agenda.
I didn't read the top part. Yeah, we'll chat with her on that.
Okay. I've had several of my neighbors come to me about that.
I mean.
Question.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 21st, 2018, regular scheduled meeting of the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board. Tonight, we almost have a full board in attendance. Neil is on parent duty tonight. So we have, we'll move into the approval of minutes. There are, and I wasn't here last, so there was a, was there a question at about the previous meeting minutes at the last meeting?
Yes, there was, and it has been resolved.
Okay.
Okay, the only problem with them, as you pointed out, is the address of the village fire station is incorrect.
Well, it's Six Elm Street. So we'll fix that.
Yes, so that needs to get fixed to 32 North Street.
Once, once was there. So if that has been resolved, is there a motion to approve those? And that would be the minutes of February 21, 2018?
Correct.
So move second. All those in favor?
I'm not voting tonight, right? You have five.
I apologize, I should have mentioned. You will be voting tonight on Sandy Pines.
But with that exception.
Yeah, okay. But you're okay with the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. We'll move forward to, so it was all those in favor, it was unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. The March 7th minutes, has everybody received a copy of those? Had a chance to review them?
Yeah, I have one, one problem other than 32 North Street. On the second page, it says, Mr. Boak asked applicant to comment on a letter received by the board. At the very bottom here, first sentence there, that letter actually was received from the applicant. It was, it was a letter from, from the state board that was provided as part of the application. It was not a separate letter. It was just something I noticed in the application.
So you asked him to comment on a letter they provided?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so just, I felt if we just took received by the board and replaced it with in the application, then I'm happy.
Okay, in the application.
Yeah. And the applicant over there is nodding, so.
Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns? Motion to approve the minutes?
Has, has modified.
Has modified, yeah.
Second.
So.
So move second. All those in favor? Thank you. And we'll use your, maybe your copy to share that with the secretary.
Sure.
Okay. And I notice we're all sitting up close to our microphones, which is great.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah. And so we'll continue to try to do that. So there are four items on the agenda this evening. Neil is not here this evening, but he was the case manager for Agenda Item 180101. It's Wilson and Elizabeth Goodwin, Atlantic Environmental LLC Authorized Agent. Site plan review, it's the findings of fact. It's for approval to install a new four-foot-by-ten-foot ramp, a four-foot-by-forty-foot pier, and a ten-foot-by-twenty-foot float, addresses 26 Langsford Road, identified as assessor's tax map 30 Block 1, Lot 37, in the Cape Porpoise West Shoreland and Resource Protection Zones. Any comments before you read findings of fact?
I do have a comment on the draft finding of fact that was distributed.
Okay.
And this is, it may be just a language issue, but item number one says the applicant is Atlantic Environmental. And I would offer that the applicant is the owner of the property and they are represented by Atlantic Environmental.
Yeah, that's the way we usually write them.
I've seen them both ways.
I see.
If, and I don't have, I can play the application. I get where you're coming from?
The application actually is filled out to say the applicant is, in this case, Atlantic Environmental.
Okay, and that's what I was gonna check.
Yes. So this is consistent with the, the way the application was filled out, although it's...
Yeah, I think it's either way.
Yep. When I write the findings, if the applicant is listed as an engineering firm, and then there's a letter of representation, then I typically fill it that way. If it lists the owner represented by, then I'll, I switch it around and say the applicant is Ed, on, you know.
Understand.
Represented by.
Yeah, there's language in, in the land use ordinance, which I've been studying weekly, that led me to believe that it should be that the owner is, is the applicant, because after the fact, it says the applicant has to deal with the use as it was approved.
Good point, yeah.
So. Just, and then, and then one other issue on item 11, it says that the applicant and the property has approximately 86 feet of shore frontage, and I think it's just...
Applicant property.
I think it's just the property, or, or the applicant's property, or something like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna.
Edit.
I'll scratch an initial and make sure we all do, so that I don't read that when we go. All right, fire it up. So this is the findings of fact and decision, the application of Atlantic Environmental LLC on behalf of Wilson Goodwin and Elizabeth Witt Goodwin, 26 Langsford Road, Kenny Bunkport, Maine, 04046. And again, it's to install a four-foot-by-ten-foot access ramp leading to a four-foot-by-forty-foot pier, leading to a three-foot-by-forty-foot seasonal ramp, which leads to a ten-foot-by-twenty-foot seasonal float for tidal access to Cape Porpoise Harbor. Following a site plan review pursuant to the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance in a final public hearing held on March 7, 2018, the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board makes the following findings of fact and conclusions, and renders the following decision, subject to the conditions enumerated below. The findings of fact are as follows. The applicant is Atlantic Environmental LLC on behalf of the owner, Wilson Goodwin and Elizabeth Witt Goodwin, with the mailing address of 411 Walnut Street, number 3173, Green Cove Springs, Florida, 32043. In a letter dated July 20, 2017, Wilson Goodwin and Elizabeth Witt Goodwin have authorized Atlantic Environmental LLC to act as their agent for this matter. Two, the property has a street address of 26 Langsford Road in Kenny Bunkport, Maine, 04046. Three, the property is located in Cape Porpoise West Resource Protection and Shoreland Zones. Four, the owner has demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a warranty deed dated February 28, 2013, and recorded March 5, 2013, in the York County Registry of Deeds Book 16544, pages 371 through 373. Number five, the property is legally non-conforming and consists of .48 acres more or less and a single-family residence. Six, the property is located at 26 Langsford Road in Kenny Bunkport, Maine, 04046, and is identified as map 30 Block 1, Lot 37, on the municipal tax assessors' maps. Seven. In an application dated January 16, 2018, the applicant proposes to construct from the property into Cape Porpoise Harbor a four-foot-wide-by-ten-foot-long access ramp, a four-foot-wide-by-forty-foot-long pier, a three-foot-wide-by-forty-foot-long seasonal ramp, and a ten-foot-wide-by-twenty-foot-wide, 200 square feet, seasonal float. The seasonal ramp to be stored on the pier in the off-season, the seasonal float to be stored in the upland. It's Exhibit 8, Exhibit 6, Sheet 1 and 2. The proposed access ramp, pier, seasonal ramp, and seasonal dock will extend approximately 96 feet, which is 13.7%, into Cape Porpoise Harbor, which measures approximately 700 feet across from the same point. Supplemental document 102-002, Goodwin Sheet 2, aerial.pdf. E-mail to the planning board by Code Office on February 27, 2018, and this meets the land use ordinance 5.11.b.15 requirements. The property and proposed access ramp, this is number eight, pier, seasonal ramp and seasonal float are located outside of the velocity zones as shown on the most recent flood insurance rate map produced by FEMA, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.1 requirements. The proposed access ramp, number nine, pier, seasonal ramp, and seasonal float is not located within the habitat of a threatened or endangered species as mapped by either the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, or the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.2 requirements. The proposed seasonal float measures 10-foot-wide-by-20-foot-long, 200 square feet, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.3 requirements. Number 11, the applicant, and we'll have a correction, the applicant's property have approximately 86 feet of shore frontage, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.4 requirements. The proposed access ramp, pier, number 12, seasonal ramp will be located 33 feet 3 inches from the southern Lea Butter, and 48 feet 9 inches from the northern Lea Butter. The seasonal float will be located 25 feet from the southern Lea Butter, and 42 feet 7 inches from the northern Lea Butter, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.5 requirements. 13. The proposed support pilings for the proposed pier will be pinned to the ledge and will not result in measurable soil disturbance, and the proposed access ramp will be a minimum of one foot above ground as measured from the beginning of the ramp. The proposed deck boards will be no greater than six inches in width and will be spaced half inch apart, one half inch apart. The applicant does not propose stairs, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.6 requirements. The proposed access ramp, pier, seasonal ramp, I keep forgetting the number, this is 14, and seasonal float are not located within an existing developed or natural beach area, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.7 requirements. Number 15. The proposed seasonal access ramp and seasonal float will be in place on a seasonal basis and stored outside of the coastal wetland in the upland during the off-season, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.8 and 5.11.b.16 requirements. Number 16. The surrounding area is developed with both residential and commercial structures, including docks associated with those structures. This proposed access ramp, pier, and seasonal ramp will be four feet or less in width, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.9 requirements. Number 17. No lighting is proposed for this project, and that's noted, it's not acceptable in land use 5.11.b.10. Or, that is not pertinent. Number 18. This, no structure is proposed to be built on, over, or abutting the proposed access ramp, pier, seasonal ramp, or seasonal float. So land use ordinance 5.11.b.11, 5.11.b.13, and 5.11.b.14 is not applicable. The proposed project, 19, is located in the Cape Porpoise Harbor, a tidal water. So land use ordinance 5.11.b.12 is not applicable. 20. The proposed access ramp, pier, seasonal ramp, and seasonal float will be used for recreational purposes, and this meets land use ordinance 5.11.b.17 requirements. 21. The proposed access ramp, pier, seasonal ramp, and seasonal float is not an enlargement, alteration, repair, or the rebuilding of a non-conforming pier, dock, walkway, wharf, ramp, or float, so land use ordinance 5.11.b.18 is not applicable. 22. The applicants have received approvals from the Maine DEP and the Army Corps of Engineer. 23. The applicants have requested no submission or performance waivers from the requirements of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance. And so 24. Pursuant to the requirements of Article 10.10.A of the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decision, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following findings which would otherwise compel denial, and there were no negative findings. 25. When a proposed development will be located within the shoreline zone or resource protection zone, in addition to the requirements of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance Article 10, the townwide regulations in Article 6, and the performance standards for specific activities and land uses in Article 7, approval of the development will also require the board make positive findings based on the information that the proposed use in the list there is either positive or not applicable. 26. The application is otherwise complete. Conclusions. Article 10.10.A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve site plan application unless it makes one or more identified findings that would otherwise compel denial, and as noted above, the board makes no such findings. So the decision is the site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any, are pursuant to Article 10.11. The applicant pursuant to 10.11 shall notify the planning board prior to transfer of rights to construct the approved project. Two, the applicant must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the form of a copy thereof attested by the Register of Deeds before any permits may be issued, before any construction may commence. Three, the applicant will comply with all terms and conditions of the Town of Kenny Bunkport ordinances, as well as the Maine DEP, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer approvals, and stated March 21, 2018.
We approve.
As amended, Juan.
As amended.
I'll second that.
I'd just like to say that it's good that the Article 5.11 standards were in there. I think that's important for a pier, and, very good.
Yeah. Sounds like we have the new dock and pier guy.
Oh, yeah. You've been superseded as dock and pier person.
Thank you, Neil. So there was a motion.
As amended.
I'll second that. All those in favor? opposed? While I sign this, I'm not sure if you need to set up, Steve, but the next item on the agenda this evening is our, is Agenda Item 171201, Sandy Pines Campground. Actually, I'll pass this down, then you guys start signing while I read.
Sure.
Sandy Pines Campground, Sebaggo Technics Authorized Agent. It's a site plan review. It's a continued public hearing for approval for a facility, for facility upgrades and to improve pedestrian and vehicular safety to the operational component of the campground, as well as relocation of campsites and other site work. It's at 277 Mills Road, Assessor's Tax Map 32, Block 1, Lot 3, in the Goose Rock Shoreland and Resource Protection Zones. So it's been some time since we've been here, and in that time, I know we've received a lot of new information, so from you, Ralph, and from you, Steve, so maybe it's a good idea if one or both of you could share some of the things that you've offered through the letters.
Sure. For the record, Steve Doe from Sebaggo Technics. Also with me tonight is Ralph. And I'll go through my letter. I had five items on my letter of things that the board had requested or we had offered up. The first item is the moving of the maintenance building. So the maintenance building was located back in here, and it was noted, we should have that 100 feet from the property line, so we moved it just inside the gate. This is the gate that takes in there. So it's located just off the gravel area there. The other thing that was noted by Ed was the, this is the model unit, which was sitting on a basketball court. That's why it was placed there originally.
Oh.
But we've slid it to be 20 feet from the, the property line. So that's the change there. And then we added an evergreen buffer along the property line. This is really an open field area. There's a septic system that sits right in here, but there's really no buffering to the butter. It is an undeveloped property, and most likely, they won't be developing there, but... It is an undeveloped property, and most likely they won't be developing there, but it is kind of a request that we buffer the butter, so we've added some evergreens in that location. Item number three was to add the total open space on the property, and we've limited this just to the Goose Rock Zone area. We already had a calculation on our plan for the shoreline zone area. So in the Goose Rock Zone, the total open space is 38.8 percent. The minimum for that area is 20 percent, so we're over the minimum there. Kind of touching on Ralph's memo, it was suggested by Tom, our last time here is, you know, what if you reduce the number of campsites to get it so that we're sort of in compliance with the area, which would be one campsite per 5,000 square feet. That number was 300 sites, so we've gone and agreed to reduce the number of grandfathered sites to 300. And this plan, I'll just kind of go over where those sites are coming, where we're actually removing sites. The majority of them are group sites that we had had. Up in the front, there was quite a few group sites that were located around the main entrance. There was a 10 group sites and one that was kind of a physical site there. So we're removing the 10 from the open, or the main entry. And then this site, number 11, we're removing that too. It's close to the pool, so we're just going to leave that undeveloped, or not rent that. The other area was over by the clam tents. There was a large field there that we had designated as seven group sites. That will be unused. There's also a very small site that's over here. That will be removed. That's right up against the property line. That will be removed. And then, pardon me, this is the manager's cottage. There was a field area behind there that we had five group sites. That will be eliminated. This is another bath house, and there's like three sites that are over there. We're going to eliminate two of those. And then this was one we had noted before because of the added lot coverage, Site 21 here. And then there's one right down here by the marsh in a field area, so that will be removed. So those are the sites that we are removing. We do have a summary on the plan that shows what was existing and what areas, and then the new totals for that. So that's, that, the only other change was... And the board didn't ask for this, but I noted it as I was going through looking at sites. This is down in the further part of the, where the new bath house is. Let me just bring this one back up again. So down here, there's a bath house, and that's in a field area where that was another group site. And the way it was, gets it off. So where we've placed it, it actually was taking up where we had kind of designated sites. So we reconfigured those, that field area to show how we haven't lost any group sites in that area. So that's the extent of what I had. I don't know if you want to, or if you have any questions for me, and then maybe Ralph can come up.
So the total removed rental units are?
24. Okay, thank you.
The 11 units that were up front, they didn't show on your other map either, did they?
They did not. Well, you're right, they did not. They showed on plans that we had on file at Town Hall for what was existing, and then when we had plans there for the utility connections, those sites were shown on there. But no, not the plans that we had actually submitted to the board originally.
They did show on attachments A, B, and C in that application, and my question is, will you be updating that application package? I'm sensitive to after the fact having a consistent set of documents.
We do have this...
So you put it on the new site plan, which is perfect.
Yeah.
But we still have submitted to us an application that's in a nice spiral binder, and it has three attachments at the back of it that have the old information as to before and after a number of sites.
I'm trying to think. With that, that would have been these plans here, I believe, which is where I showed how I was moving sites around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right.
I don't know if that, to me, that, those sites are there today, and this, these exhibits are really just to show how we're moving sites around. They weren't really, it wasn't really a formal plan set. It really was to show how we're moving sites around.
I understand it wasn't, it's intent. There's a couple, the broader question I have is bringing the package into consistency. The cover letter, for example, talks about eliminating one site. Now you're really eliminating 24. Your memo says that.
Right.
It's nicely documented, but it's not, it doesn't jive with what's in the cover letter anymore.
Right. Typically, I know in process, there's always this process of things changing throughout an application.
I almost want to, and have a summary at the end that says, here's where we ended up. This, this, this new set of plans superseded the two previous sets of plans and the three attachments that are in the back. Yeah, I don't think you want to go.
Revising.
Edit revising them all, but somehow I want to, I want to, at the end, be able to point to something that says, this is the right one, this is the wrong one.
Yeah, I think the finding of facts, as long as the findings of facts reference the documents, and we actually have revision dates on these plans.
Yeah, maybe we can do it that way.
And it actually references, you know, the 14th. So I think as long as you tie it to these specific plans.
One more related issue. You wrote us a nice memo in response to a request on the 30th of January summarizing how you're, we were going to end up with a total parcel, let me see the, we're going to end up at 4,636.5 square foot per site.
Correct.
Right? That's not where we're...
That's not where we're at now.
You're going to end up somewhere around 5,000.
Right.
Would you be willing to reissue this memo that shows, here's where we are? Just because that's such an important one, it talks about basically eliminating one of the four non-conformances of the site.
No, I think that's a good point.
Thank you.
That'll be, yeah. Because that will probably be something Warner would probably be looking at more often as, you know...
It will handle the, in the findings of fact, as you, as you discussed, the other, the other issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I think as a, as a practical matter, you know, the board could certainly ask for a, you know, a final plan that has everything memorialized to it, that certainly could be a document that could be recorded with findings, that has, you know, that has the site, has approved with all of the, you know, with all of the notations, you know, in terms of having a final.
Yep.
Well, that's, that's what this latest plan set that the board had.
That's typically what we'll work off of, when we're dealing with a subdivision. You know, it's the same, same piece of that, you know, you may have a subdivision plan, it goes through a number of iterations, but ultimately, at the end of the day, what we work off of is that, you know, that last final set that's been, you know, that's, you know, that has gotten its blessing or approval, and that's typically a recorded document.
I think that makes sense, that we're going to look to this one that just came out here as the, as the final.
Yeah.
One, one question that will come up later on that is, it wasn't obvious to me how these 76 non-conforming sites, if you will, the sites where we're not asking you to remove the park models, where are those on this plan? How are those sites identified?
That's, it's not identified on this plan set. It's identified on plans that are in Warner's, and those are, those are identified on his plans, and it's...
How hard would it be to take that table and...
Just included in that nice...
Yeah, they're essentially in, and I could do that. I think they're all in White Pine.
And I understand that the changes that you're requesting...
White Pine and Sandpiper.
Yeah, so I can, I can maybe amend.
I just think it would put a ribbon around, you know, all of the discussions we've had.
Now, those sites are not stagnant, in other words, that all the sites, a lot of the sites have full utility hookup to them, meaning sewer and water. So some person may be on this site right here, they have a seasonal camper, they haul it in there, they want to leave it there. Five years from now, they haul it out, they no longer want to camp here. That was a seasonal site. Somebody else may want to have a seasonal site, and they want to put it on a different site. So that 76 can kind of float around a little bit in the campground. We can't have any more than 76.
I see.
You know, it's, it's not like that. Now, there are park models, and a lot of the park models will stay there because they're just difficult to move, but there are people that just have their, you know, pull behind camper, and that's a seasonal one. The 76 is not just park models, it's somebody that wants to keep it there.
I had misunderstood that.
Yeah. So we could maybe, I don't know if we document how many seasonals are on here, maybe that's what we need to do, is put a number, you know, total seasonal sites, 76. And that is not on there.
I appreciate you thinking about it. Our intent is to use, use this application as a way to baseline any non-conforming aspects of the site, and this is the one that I didn't see that we had done to date.
Well, I think if I at least add that, there are 76 seasonal.
And here's where they could be.
They could almost be anywhere. I mean, somebody could even want a tent site that's seasonal. But I'm just saying, that's the way that the Spangs had it. They had 76, and they said there was people that just wanted a tent site seasonal. You know, we actually think that most people would be an RV, but...
Yeah, this is, this goes to that land use ordinance line item that says you can't leave an RV, tent, or trailer permanently.
Exactly.
So the easiest thing to police it might be to say, give some thought as to what, how you want to manage that. You may want to not be in the business of having people leave their tents there all...
No, they don't, they don't, but that's, I think that's what the historically they were, but...
Understood.
Okay.
Can I ask you two more clarifications on your letter? Or maybe, maybe it's not your letter.
It's Ralph.
I think it's Ralph's letter.
It's Ralph's letter, so Ralph maybe want to present his letter too.
All right. Beg your pardon.
For the record, Ralph Austin, representing Sandy Pines. I think Ed has a question.
I wanted to ask you on the, you codified in your letter, you captured very clearly what, what you were assigning Sandy Pines up to do in the future, and one of them said, we're going to use best management practices.
Correct.
And I wondered what that meant in terms of, is there a reference that, that that would tie to?
And there is a state reference.
That would be terrific if we could have that.
So I thought you just wanted to add?
Yeah, yeah.
So if I would just add the state reference to that?
That would be perfect.
I don't know what the reference number is, but it, it deals with how you manage the property, deal with erosion control.
I Googled it, and I see that there's a, there's a plethora of them out there, and so I understand what the intent that it is. I just wanted to...
Reference it in.
Tie it, tie it down.
One particular one that the state has identified, so.
That would be great. And then the other language issue was, you said regularly inspect, or inspect the septics on a regular basis, and I wondered what specifically you were proposing.
And that's state.
I assumed it wasn't every 10 years, but what did you have in mind there?
They will inspect them annually, it's just part of the process. They won't be necessarily emptying septic tanks every year.
No, I just wanted to, to really tie down what it was you were saying, and I think you said inspect.
Yeah, so they'll have to, you know, look at the manhole covers, you know, make sure that the septic waste hasn't gotten to a level where they have to pump it.
And you will pump it as required.
As is required, exactly. Yeah, I would say they inspect annually.
So that would be added to the condition.
That would be good, and...
Yeah. Thank you.
Ralph, in your letter, you said a year ago or so, there was a detailed map that was done with Warner, and we haven't gotten that.
It's in, in the Code Office, but it's reflected on the plan set that we submitted. It's, the, the location of the sites hasn't changed, but initially it was filed with Warner's office to show where the sites were, and then also as part of our utility upgrade, it was important to show those.
I just have a couple of things I wanted to clarify.
Sure.
You wrote a memo basically on the jurisdiction of the planning board, and it raised some questions for me. Well, one of the things you implied basically was that Warner's site walk through there and the existing maps and so forth basically constituted a permit to show that this was basically the, the basis on which the planning board should make its decision, and I disagree with that very strongly, because we just had a case where this issue was taken up by the courts and affirmed by the Supreme Court. There was no specific permit given, basically stated by the Code Enforcement Office that this was a basis for conformance with the land use ordinance, basically to the point at which it had, and there was no public input on it. It was never reported to the public that there would be such a thing, so I disagree very strongly that that constituted any kind of okay on a basis. And then I talked to an attorney at Maine Municipal Association, because I am confused about planning board jurisdiction and some of these issues. And I know that, for example, that the planning board cannot take a deed that somebody else calls illegal and start to resolve the issue of illegality of the deed. You know, we cannot go back that far. However, in a case like this, where there's a question of whether the basis on which the applicant is coming in is, is questionable, and we can direct the Code Enforcement Office, for example, to pull up all the records, we can pull up records, public can pull up records, and we can basically, using factual and credible evidence that we find credible, determine the basis on those facts and go from there. So we cannot give it to the Zoning Board of Appeals. A member of the public can, but we cannot direct something up to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I did, you know, try to straighten out those jurisdiction issues so that we could look at them. And there are some other things in there I think are questionable, but that's, that's the main one I wanted to point out to the board.
Yeah, and I, I understand there's an issue there. I suspect that's why Attorney Chow was here this evening to, to opine to the board on that. This was, you know, my, my thinking on it, but in the event that either the board disagreed or based on Attorney Chow's opinion disagreed, we did go on then to lay out what we believe, and we can get into that discussion, but laid out the facts that we believe lead to the number of grandfathered sites, and put that in for the board's consideration.
Would you like me to speak to that issue, or?
Yeah.
If not, that's fine.
Yeah, if you want to clarify it further.
Yeah, okay, if you think it is. I disagree with Ralph's argument about the planning board not having jurisdiction. I agree with you, Nina. Just from a textual matter, it is true that the planning board has somewhat limited jurisdiction, but just looking at your ordinance itself, Article 10.4 indicates what the powers and duties of the planning board are. And it says that the planning board shall hear and approve with modifications or conditions, or disapprove an application for site plan review approval, based on its compliance with standards set forth in this ordinance. Okay, so that's your general powers and duties. If you then fast forward to the guidelines for your decisions, which I know you're all well aware of under ten point ten, ten point ten A one is, um, A one A is a catch-all. It says the planning board shall approve an application for site plan review unless it makes one or more of the following written findings with respect to the proposed development. And, and ten point ten A one A says, "The proposed use does not meet the definition or specific requirements set forth in this ordinance, or will not be in compliance with applicable state or federal laws." So I think in this context, as I've said before, the planning board is charged with looking at a, an application, and specifically under ten point two A three can look at the expansion, enlargement, or change of any existing use. And within that jurisdiction that's specifically granted to the board, I believe that read in conjunction with ten point ten A one A, that the planning board certainly has the authority to look at this application as a whole and determine whether or not there is either an impermissible expansion of a non-conforming use based upon what is being proposed here overall on the site, not specifically limited to the three or four specific improvements that the applicant is bringing before you, but looking at the overall use of the site. And then finally, I just wanted to point out, for the record, that, that there is further support for the planning board having explicit jurisdiction in this area under eight point eight of your ordinance, which governs non-conforming uses. It actually says, under eight point eight C, that an existing non-conforming use may be changed to another non-conforming use, provided that the proposed use has no greater adverse impact on the subject and adjacent properties and resources than the former use, as determined by the planning board. The planning board determines whether or not the change of a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use would increase the adverse impact on the properties. Now, the applicant, of course, is saying that hasn't happened. It's up to you, as the planning board, to determine. I know there have been some arguments raised by members of the public as to whether this has changed the use to a mobile home park, or to some other use different from a campground. That's obviously up to you to decide whether that's happened, if you so choose. So I think there are any number of areas in the ordinance where I feel comfortable that you can look at the issue of an expansion of a use, a change of use, and make, make a determination about whether you think this fits within that.
And I'll just say for the record, I respect Amy's opinion, I disagree with it, but I don't think we should spend our time arguing that this evening. You know, without waiving that, arguing, you know, without waiving that position, we're more than willing to have the board make that determination as to what the, what the grandfathering is on, on this property, particularly a number of sites. Because it doesn't suit anyone's purpose to get engaged in a long legal argument on, on the jurisdiction issue.
So I take it their plan to eliminate twenty-four grandfathered sites is sort of horse trading this expansion of use? And so Amy, I missed a couple of meetings for Sandy Pines, and the one you had, I was here. And you had asked us to look, has, has this been an expansion of use? In other words, is there a restaurant, are they renting things? And if so, I didn't know what, then you have to, I didn't, I didn't catch that part. Can we do that horse trading if we find that there's an expansion of, of, of use? Or is that too strict of a line to cross where we can't even eliminate twenty-four sites to allow this expansion of use? I wasn't sure of that.
So, as I said at that meeting that you were at, I, I think the case law governing whether you have an impermissible expansion of a non-conforming use is, is very fact-specific and fact-driven. I think Ralph would probably agree with me on that. And I don't think there is any one clear way to craft the right solution as to whether or not what's being proposed is an impermissible expansion and tips the scale that way, or whether or not this is, again, in keeping with the, the original use. We talked about the Frost v. Lucy case and looking at whether there's an essential change in the character of the use. There are a number of cases that don't really apply here, but, I mean, there's, there is a case, just for example, where a restaurant, this is from the seventies or eighties, but a restaurant that only had a license to sell beer, then got a license to sell liquor, and it was grandfathered to sell beer. But the court felt that that was a sufficient change in character, actually, of the entire restaurant to change the nature of the use so that it was an impermissible expansion. That's not really necessarily relevant here. But I just use that as an example, because there are a number of cases out there that really go into, what, what are the various ways that you can look at whether something is an expansion of a non-conforming use, or whether it really does fit within the character?
Well, we had two big issues that I saw. One was first determining what kind of use there was, going back historically. So we had a basis on which to determine whether there was an expansion of use and how much expansion there was. That's the basis on which we had, we needed to look at the application itself. Then, on top of that, you have issues like the buildings and expansion of use. If you go from all tent sites to RVs, does that change the character of the use? And, and you have to look at each one of those, basically, in terms of case law, what the courts have seen. And, and then just common sense, you know? Are there going to be any more people in an RV than there are at a campsite? You know, if a couple comes in an RV and, and they also, or a couple comes in in a tent, is that going to increase density? Is that going to change the site itself, you know, or the use of the site? So, things like that, I think you have to look at.
I, I agree with you, Nina, also, that, that I think the planning board is, is uniquely situated to develop factual findings based upon a complete record and based upon a public hearing process that admittedly couldn't happen when Warner, you know, went out to the site with the applicant. It was not a full sort of fact-finding process. It was as good as, as, you know, Warner could do with, with the facts that were available at the time.
If I can just interject one comment, and, and Mark, just on what you said, the idea of reducing the sites from three twenty-four to three hundred wasn't an attempt at horse trading, to say, okay, an expansion's okay, but we can do a less of an expansion. One, we don't believe we have an expansion, but we do know it's a non-conforming use. And by getting the average size per site down to the five thousand, we make it less non-conforming than it was. And someone on the board had suggested that, so that's why it's not, we're not trying to trade so we can get something else from the board. We just thought it was a good suggestion to, um, again, try and make it less non-conforming than it was.
I, I think that what we were looking at to do with that is to speak to basis. We wish to get some basis that we could start from, and then determine if, if the application is.
Did you determine that three hundred twenty-four was the basis?
No.
I mean, I went to the website, and it said two hundred and eighty-six.
And if you go on the Wayback Machine, you'll see two twenty-five. And if you go to different accessories cards, you'll see everything from two hundred and seventy-four, or something like that, up to four hundred. And so what we're trying to do is get the planning board to agree on a number of sites and try to get a basis from which we can go forward.
I know the previous owner in the memo said that they didn't expand any.
They didn't add any new sites.
The present owners haven't expanded since they bought it, but the, the previous owner didn't say how many they had when they sold it.
Is that the one, is that your affidavit?
Yes.
Okay, one, that's hearsay. To me, that's irrelevant, because the person is the.
It's, it's the rules of, this isn't a court.
I know it isn't a courtroom, but as soon as I saw that, I could, I said.
The board can consider any reasonable evidence. They put the weight on it, they want to, but the fact that, you know.
But I noticed in that many, the previous owner didn't say how many sites there were.
And they also said that they fit in as many people as they could, and they had a lot of people. So you don't really, no. You don't really have good evidence there. So we're trying to come to a compromise that might make the neighbors happy, that might make the planning, give the planning board something on which they can go forward.
I mean, it's, the, the records from the prior owner are virtually nonexistent.
Right.
And, and if I misrepresent anything that Michael told you, let me know. But basically, they didn't keep track of the number of sites. They just put in as many people as they could. But he knew that the sites that were there, when his father owned it in the seventies and early eighties, they did not expand at any new physical sites to that campground from eighty-five, actually earlier in eighty-five, up to when they sold it in two thousand and sixteen. So what Steve did was, when, after we bought it, walked it and determined, here are the number of sites on the property. It's probably fewer sites than at times, they actually had tents or campers or people on there, but we can't account for that. We can only say, this is what we see on the site physically, and we've been told they did not add any sites since eighty-five, so to us, that's the number. Which, we're willing to, to make it less non-conforming, reduce that down to three hundred. And I know there's, um, on the, on the, some of the older websites, Mark, there was the number of two, two eighty-six, something like that. But they would not have been advertising on the website for the seventy-six seasonals. You add that in, and you get up to over actually three fifty, which also comports with that one tax card that people have noted where it added up to two hundred and seventy-nine. But again, we don't believe that took into account the seasonals. You add those in, and you get up to the three fifty number. Because the tax cards, one, not being legal documents that way, but when you look at them, you're right, Nina, there, there's that two seventy-nine. There's one that says permit for three twenty, I'm not quite sure what permit that would have been. And then there's another tax card even later that says four hundred sites. So we're just trying to take what we found physically on the land and then tie it into the explanation that those were what were there in, in nineteen eighty-five.
You're good, Mark? Did you discuss at the previous meetings additional activities since this current owner?
There was discussion around how folks would get down to the beach and wouldn't be shuttled to the beach. Refresh my memory on the kayak discussion.
Steve, you had conversations on, on that more than I did.
Yeah, my understanding, I think Tom might have noted this at the last meeting, that their website says they have kayak rental. That, and my understanding, talking with campground operations, is that there's always been, even when the Spangs had it, a private company that would come in and rent a kayak. You could rent kayaks from them. So if you want to rent, say you show up to campground, you want to rent a kayak, they will contact this company, and they will bring a kayak, and you could rent it from them. The campground itself does not rent the kayaks, so. And the prior owners had the same operation, so.
Does the campground have a liquor license?
They do, yes.
And what is it for?
I know they sell beer in the store. Yeah, I don't know, but they, there, there was a, the, the Spangs had a liquor license.
Okay.
So my understanding is all the things that they're doing now was part of the original operations there.
Warner might remember better than I, but I believe it's for selling, not, not a bar where you can buy drinks, but it's just.
Consumption on premise?
Right.
Not the store?
Right.
It's a, there's essentially, I forget the exact term, but like a retail license, you know, so.
You know, so you could sell, you know, prepackaged, you could sell, you know, like beer and wine.
In their containers, you can't.
That's right, yeah, you couldn't, it wasn't a serve, you know, a license to serve.
We did, um, run it by the code office if we could have a bar, and the code officer or the director of planning ran it by the town attorney, and the answer was that, no. So that's not in the application.
Any other questions? So it doesn't mean we're over yet, but, so this is a continued public hearing. And what I'd like to ask is if, if when folks from the public, whether they're butters or public, are here to speak or ask questions, we try to focus our questions on this new material and new information presented tonight. So with that said, I'd like to open up the floor for any butters, if they'd like to speak or ask questions. Any members of the public? And just a friendly reminder to introduce yourself, please.
My name is Bob Sherman, I live at Goose Rock, and I'm part of the few folks that put together the beach use agreement. And I have particular interest in that, because I think it's a great agreement. It's allowed everybody in Kennybunk Port to enjoy the benefits of Goose Rock's beach. At the last meeting, Mr. Austin, you responded to questions raised by several people from the board. And in my letter to the planning board, I pointed out that during the summer months, that Mr. Harrington operates a small fleet of suburban-type vehicles, which sort of get people shuttled from the Tides Hotel, to Hidden Pond, to other Harrington properties. And my specific concern was that with the Harrington fleet, they use to shuttle people from Sandy Pines and their guests to and from Goose Rock's beach. My recollection was at that meeting, you said, "No, there would be no shuttling." And further, that you expected the people staying at Sandy Pines would choose to go to the beach and will do so in the same manner in which they've done in the past. I don't know what that is, candidly, as I reported to you. I've seen people with kids, dark, no light, pulling kids in wagons, bicycles, getting back and forth from Sandy Pines to the beach. It is a concern to me, as a, as a guy who managed properties, a lot, I'm concerned a little bit about that. But I'm mostly concerned about the shuttling, basically. Is that still correct? Did I get that correct? And that's really my question, one of my questions, sir.
First of all, and no disrespect meant, Bob, but it's not the Harrington fleet. And I've told this board before that we shouldn't bring in Tides or Hidden Pond. That is a, owned by a partnership of which Tim Harrington happens to be one of four owners. Sandy Pines is Tim's operation by himself. But having said that, their intent is not to shuttle anyone from Sandy Pines to the beach. And I, we went through this last time, you can't have it both ways. You can't say, "We don't want any shuttling," but gee, we don't want people walking, or driving, or bicycling there. I mean, people are going to go to the beach, and how they did it in the past was, they'd either drive, or, or ride a bike, or walk. And we presume that's, that's how they'll do it now.
My apologies to Mr. Harrington and his fleet. I'll keep it isolated to the Tides, where it does most of its activities. And I apologize for trying to include it in, in what happens here at Sandy Pines. I, I do think that Sandy Pines does operate, and I am concerned about people getting from the site, by the way, to the property. I think there's no lighting along Route nine, it's very dark. And I think, I don't know what you may think is important, but I think caring for the people who are visiting Sandy Pines and making sure they have safe access and egress, if they're going to get to the beach, is important. You might want to consider that at some point in the future, because I think it is important that people are not transitioning there in dark. I, I guess the last point I just have is this, you know, we put a lot of time into the beach use agreement. And in doing so, we really were focused on people who could use the beach, who were living at Goose Rock, either on the beach or backlot owners. We want to make sure the rest of the residents who are part of Kennybunk Port were able to get to the beach and get good use of it. I hate to see those people get squeezed out because of some extraordinary effort to try and use the beach from a, a development that's going to have three hundred plus, in my opinion, multifamily sites able to get to the beach. And I'm not sure how that'll happen, but I want to protect the residents of Kennybunk Port. But I want to protect the residents of Kennybunkport at all costs. That's my interest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Ray Lockard from Goose Rocks. My main concern is the density, which Bob referred to in terms of the number of people. But as mentioned in the, in the last meeting, and not to rehash, but, but from a specific concern perspective that, that I'm not sure was really focused on, is that, you know, this would never be, and I understand there's, there's grandfathering issues here, but just from a, a density of people in a, in a specific area of land, and waste, and, and use, and, and being in a, in a tidal zone, my biggest concern is the, the impact into the river of, of this, you know, what could be, if you put four people at each site, and maybe that's not a proper number, but you have twelve hundred people in a very concentrated area. So Attorney Chow, I thought it was, thank you for coming tonight. And I think it would have been great to have that sort of upfront. I think that discussion maybe so, maybe for the future, something to consider in terms of setting the tone for some of the discussions here. Because I felt like that's sort of sat in the middle now of some of the discussions. I wasn't real clear from, from the, the review of the, the legal precedent and the, and the regulations and the, the sort of, I guess, guidelines for the board, you know, whether there's, there's bandwidth here to, to sort of establish, you know, what is the appropriate use of the site now from a number of people perspective. And I understand there's a business here, and I'm not trying to say that, that a business should be shut down. But it, it wasn't exactly clear to me what the, what the scope of the board is at this point in terms of the use of the site. I certainly appreciate the fact that there's been an, an effort to come back from the performance perspective and taking the, taking the sites back. And I, and I think that's, that's certainly a good faith effort to, to get back into a more conforming mode. But, but again, I still think we're at, we're at a very significant potential environmental impact to, to the Goose Rocks area, that now that we're establishing the precedent for the use of the site, and I'm, and I'm still very much unclear on, and as we all are, I think, on how we got to these numbers. There was some mention of best efforts to establish the number that was put into the code. I, I significantly disagree with that. I think there was a cursory effort put into that, and that's sort of where we, we got to this point. But we now have an, an opportunity to maybe establish that. And again, not knowing the guidelines, maybe there's an opportunity to get this to a more sustainable level. So that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Amy, I wonder if, if you might address nonconformance and why the site is there and why it can be so dense in terms of people.
So I'll try to, to summarize a few of the points that I think the case law does address when, when the board is looking at the question of whether we have an impermissible expansion of a nonconforming use. And density can be an issue, and the devil is always in the details. But the leading case on this does say that if you have a nonconforming use, it's allowed to stay there. It's a legally nonconforming use. If you were to prohibit it, then in extreme cases, that could become a taking of property. However, if, if the owner of the site who has the legally nonconforming use expands that use impermissibly, which is something more than a de minimis expansion, then that can be prohibited without there being a taking of property because it's, it's transformed into a new use. It's changed its essential character. So how does density come into play with that? The Frost v. Lucy case says that a mere increase in the intensity or volume of use isn't necessarily going to tip the scale over to an impermissible expansion of a nonconforming use. And that case, just to, to, to repeat the, the facts of that case, we had a seasonal kind of inn with a restaurant that served in Patrons of the Inn. And someone bought that inn and decided to, that, that he wanted to expand the use. There was an advertising campaign. He wanted to have weddings there. And the inn that used to be used only seasonally was increased to be used more than seasonally. And, and to that point, the law court looked at that and said, look, going from seasonal to nonseasonal use, that's, that may be an increase in the volume or intensity of the use, but it doesn't change the nature of the use fundamentally. The law court went on to say, though, that the way in which the restaurant was proposed to be used, and in this case, it had previously been used to serve patrons of the inn and the occasional person who might have walked in from the community. And when the new owner took over, the, he advertised it to be used for weddings and other large events. And in that situation, the law court looked at that, and the board looked at that below and said, uh-uh, that's an expansion of a nonconforming use. That's not sort of natural expansion over time. That's a change of use. We're changing the essential character of the property. So that's, again, that's Frost v. Lucy. You know, on the other hand, I've also mentioned the kind of, the restaurant change from selling just beer to selling liquor. And some might think that's not a very big change. But at least the court in that instance said that, that was an impermissible change of use. So I don't know if that, that probably doesn't address necessarily head-on the density question. I think you're allowed to make facts around what you said baseline historically. What do we need to look at as to what was there? And then determining whether you think what's being proposed now is in keeping with what was there.
You can't, we can't, we don't have jurisdiction when, when we have the basis, basically, for the use. We don't have jurisdiction to really go in and say, okay, we're going to make this non, you know, less, more conforming. And we want you to reduce, you know, and take another fifty sites off without a really good reason. For example, that, I don't know, it's, it's changed the character of everything that's going on around you and adversely affecting the neighbors and affecting the safety of the neighbors or something like that. There would have to be a really strong reason for that. If you have a farm, for example, and suddenly everything becomes residential around you and it becomes residentially zoned, you're grandfathered in for a farm, unless you do something that affects your neighbors so detrimentally that the town has to come in and say, well, you really can't use it like that anymore. But they have to have a very good reason for it. So I think what you've been asking for is for us to look and make some more changes, but we can't do that. We don't really have the jurisdiction to do that.
So, so, so thank you for that. And I do understand that. It was really about the finding of what is baseline, and that's really been a, a discussion for tonight. And was trying to make the point that I, I can't even frankly tell you where the baseline is at. And I think we've been challenged to, to, to agree on what document can be used for that. I, I don't know where the, the legal issues fall around establishment of baseline. That, to me, is, is, is an area of focus for establishment of number of sites. And that's, that's sort of where I was, was heading. Now, that would result in potentially a reduction in the number of the current sites, but an establishment of, of a acknowledged previous baseline. And that's, that's really where I was headed, but I, but I appreciate what you were saying.
And as to the legal standard for, if, if the planning board so chooses to make findings around historically the baseline number of sites, that's a factual finding to be made by you based upon all of the evidence? And, and that's within your province to decide.
It might be an idea to do a site walk and.
I'm not so sure that a site walk will help you because it's been used so much, you know, if there were extra campsites or there were fewer, you're not going to see evidence of it. And that's what we're talking about, really, as a baseline, is the number of campsites.
So if, if you were reviewing a new campground, you know, in a different area of town, you know, the performance standard that you would use in the ordinance is that five thousand square feet of, of land area per site to establish the density. And that's the same number that's used both in shoreline zone and outside of shoreline zone. So those numbers are, are consistent.
And I agree with you. I'd like to see, you know, sites come out of shoreline zones for sure, you know, and away from water. But in this case, they are grandfathered in. And the fact that the applicant has put in new septic systems and things to try to handle, that I think speaks well for them. You know, we don't have a basis to go in there and, and try to change that.
Mr. Driver?
Richard Driver, Goose Rocks. As an initial issue, last time I raised the question of wetlands, and Mr. Doe said that he knows it when he sees it. But the problem the board has is that there's no wetland study. Now, you would think that a property that is as low as this property and bordering wetlands and bordering rivers, marsh, that there would be isolated wetlands and pools and what have you. Now, there's been a lot of trucking and filling and what have you that's been going on for the last year because of what they have been doing with sewers and, or septic systems. But you really don't have a basis to say, well, this glamping tent or this park model is too close to a wetlands because you don't know for sure, other than what is provided in the, in the plans. But they're not, it's not provided based on a wetland study. And I'm surprised that the board has not requested that information from the applicant. It's obviously a pretty standard thing to request. And we're talking about multiple acres and three hundred or so units. And one major piece of information that you should have before you, you don't. Now, it may be that there are no isolated wetlands. On the other hand, there may be a bunch of them. And, and the only way that you're going to know it is by requiring the applicant to do a wetlands study. Bernard, did I understand correctly last time that in terms of the porches and, and sunrooms, that the applications were, or at least forty-nine of them, were subsequent to nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and three?
I believe that's correct, yes. But they, you know, that those permits, you know, that those permits were issued in that more recent timeframe.
Okay. So, and that timeframe is subsequent to the adoption of a zoning ordinance?
Correct.
So one of the questions before the planning board is, making RVs or park units more structurally permanent apparently was not prior to the zoning ordinance, but was subsequent to the zoning ordinance. So that, that's a question of whether or not there is an expansion. And this evening, there was something troubling. Mr. Doe said about, he said that the park sites were floating, that they could move a park unit from one place to another place. And then he talked about campers and RVs that might come there, and somebody might decide to leave it for five years. Now, one, I didn't think the ordinance permitted that. But isn't that a way of expanding the seventy-six park units? Somebody pulls in an RV and they hook up, and they leave it there year-round for any number of years? You know, there's just so many things in terms of this application that the planning board doesn't know. I mean, the applicant has not been forthcoming in, in really presenting to the board exactly what was there. Spang didn't, the records Spang had are essentially nonexistent, according to Ralph. Well, that's not your fault. The, the onus in terms of an application falls on the applicant, not on the planning board. You, you don't, you, you don't have the responsibility, and you really don't have the authority to fill in the blanks. It, it either is a complete application, and you know what was there, and if you have units that, in this nonconforming status, that prior to the zoning ordinance were just RVs. I mean, I don't think park units existed at that, that type. Certainly not the type that you can purchase today. And now, just look at their site. Or just go out there and look at what a park unit is with a, with a deck and a sunroom and essentially a foundation. It's not movable. Even Mr. Doe suggested that it is difficult to, one that's there, move it from one place to, to another when it already has the sunroom on. I mean, that, the sunroom and the deck has to be supported by something, not wheels. The park unit has wheels on it. But these are permanent units. And whether, Ralph says, well, we, we're going to reduce the number of units by twenty-four, and we're less nonconforming. You're not less nonconforming. A campsite is a nonconforming use in the zone, period. If he, if he reduces it by a hundred units, it's still a nonconforming use. And I think the issue of whether or not you have the authority to look into the application is settled tonight. You do. And you should ask the questions. The, I think it's the Better Business Bureau had two hundred and twenty-five units. Where did that number come from? I don't know. But that was the number that they indicated. It said three employees and two hundred and twenty-five units. And that was in the nineties. It's still the applicant's responsibility to give you a full application and to give you enough information to, to make a reasonable decision. Now, there was no explanation or addressing the question of the kind of entertainment that they're now going to provide. Bring a band from, from Boston. Was that something that Spang did? I seriously doubt it. Is that, is that a permitted accessory kind of operation? Not really. I mean, you, you, you have to address what the flavor of this is. It is not the rustic campground that the Spangs had. Not anything near. Are glamping tents in expansion? Look at the pictures of the glamping tents. That's not the pup tent that some of us may have slept in. And it is certainly changing the character of the, of the campground. So it's in your hands and for you to apply whatever wisdom you think is appropriate and, and the demands that you think are appropriate on the applicant. But given the fact that this is the largest single development in, in Kennybunkport. But given the fact that this is the largest single development in Kenny Bunkport, I would think you would have, I think you would have the applicant provide more information than he has and that you wouldn't rush to judgment in terms of passing this because there's some pressure, the season is coming, he wants to make his changes. Once you pass it, then it's cast in concrete. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driver.
If I could address a couple of the points you made. First, in terms of bands and things like that, none of that is before us in an application and the character of how it's going to be used. We're looking at improvements to the site, and what we were trying to do was get to a basis. There are several different ways that this campground is non-conforming, and we're trying to figure out the basis in which it was grandfathered in so we could determine basically the amount of land allotted to a site so they could basically expand a bit in terms of making a new drive, you know, how much impervious surface there would be there and how well it coordinated with the campground ordinance. That's what we, those are the things that we can determine in this application. We can't determine whether they could have a liquor license. We can't determine whether they can have vans because those issues are just not before us. We don't have the authority to rule on them.
But didn't Amy ask us to determine, have those things been added since they bought it? And if so, it'd be an illegal expansion of use.
Well, that's why I asked, that's why I asked about, you know, was there beer and wine before there and liquor and so forth?
And bands, we didn't ask about that.
We haven't asked about the bands. That's something you can ask about. In several cases, like I think we're going back to Frost v. Lucy where the hotel expanded, it was permissible to go into year-round use of the hotel. And what they pointed out was that the neighbors around, many of them had taken their seasonal homes and it winterized them and were living in them, and so it was in character with the neighborhood. You know, they could make an argument, for example, that if, and I don't think they do, I think it's just a seasonal campground. So, none of those structures that are there are going to be used. They may sit there, but they're not going to be used. And, you know, seasonally, we're not expanding the use year-round.
For that, that particular point, yes. It's not, it's still a seasonal place, but if the applicant in his advertising and his description of his operation says, "I'm going to do X, Y, and Z," and X, Y, and Z constitute an expansion, I think you look at it. You say it's not before you. Well, you, what is before you is the operation of that campground, and the applicant has in his advertisements, in his brochures, he tells you what he's going to do.
Okay.
And some of it is an expansion.
Well, my assessment then would be, because it's not in, exactly in the application in front of the planning board, that that would be something that the code enforcement officer would address first, whether there was a violation of the use.
Well, you know, do we, do we want to get to the point that you, you approve the application even though it is in black and white that the applicant is going to do something that the code enforcement officer will say is a problem? And all of a sudden, we're in a lawsuit or at least a dispute when you could address it now? I mean, I, I think the use of that site is before you, the total use of that site, however the site is used, it is before you because the applicant put it before you, and it is not limited to just what he says in his application. He says what he thinks is the best.
I agree with you, but it's not for us to research other, you know, expansions of use other than what we really see in the application. I have no evidence of bands or anything like that. You can come up here and say that, but I don't have any evidence that he's having bands there.
And you have evidence that they weren't there before.
No, wait, it's, I don't have to, he has to prove that they were there before, Tom. I don't have to prove that they weren't there.
No, he doesn't have to prove it to us. He has to, he may have to prove it to somebody to get, gets a license for, he walks in and wants to get a license for entertainment.
I believe I gave some of the information to the chair the last time. Just look at their site, look at their advertisements. It's there in black and white.
What I received everybody here got.
He tells you, the applicant tells the public what he's going to do with the site, and is that an expansion?
But has he done it? Do you have evidence that he's done it? Then you would bring that to the code enforcement office.
I.
I mean, we can't speculate on what he's going to do with the site with an application.
I'm not speculating. I'm not, you know, just pulling it out of thin air. I'm reading it. I'm reading it, not something I wrote, something his publicity people wrote, something that's on his website.
Well, I don't know.
I mean, but that is part of it. But that's only one, one issue. The major issue is what is, what was on the site, whether the types of units that are now going to be on the site are non-conforming to what the Spangs had.
But now you're talking about expansion of property and that would be site, that would be like expanding a house and that sort of site non-conforming. We're talking about a non-conforming use.
Okay. So, the.
And you talk about a wetland survey. Well, we would do that for subdivision, yes, or for expansion of a house or something or putting something like a tool shed on, and maybe we should be looking at it for the buildings that are going on. But we don't necessarily, as a planning board, require a wetland survey. We would in a new subdivision going in because we need to know where all of that is. But this is an already existing campground, and when Steve Doe comes in and says that he can tell where the wetlands are, I do believe him because I could tell you where the wetlands are. I can tell you from the plants that are growing there very quickly where there are wetlands. It's very easy to do.
I think sometimes those discussions too are had at the code office, and some of the applications we've received that include them are included because Werner has had a discussion and they know that something is sited within an area that requires it. So, I guess that's where I'm coming from around just the wetland piece is that if there was a concern at code, this wouldn't be here today without a wetland survey. It would have had one, and we would have, you know, we would have had that to review. The, I guess, you know, I can, I respect where you're coming from. I know you don't want it there. I think you started by mentioning that it's a, it's a non-conforming use, it's a campground, and campgrounds aren't allowed there. And then, I think, very clearly made other points that you're concerned with. What I wanted to mention is, and I think I feel, I can speak for the board, but I, we feel no pressure to do anything other than follow the procedures. And this stack here is Sandy Pines and, you know, equal stacks down, down the table. I would hope that you would trust that each member here has gone through this, and there's still discussion to be had tonight. So, I think you've made, you've made your points very clear. There's been great discussion, and I'm not saying you're done, but I just want you to know, I feel no pressure. I want to do what's right, you know, in terms of the land use ordinance, and I think that the guidance provided from town attorney has cleared a lot of my questions up. But I just, I guess I wanted to make it clear that there's no pressure here. If we had to have five more meetings, I, as a chair, I would say we should do that, and everyone here would feel welcome to say the same thing.
Look, first of all, no, I don't want it there, but it's been there. I spent most of my legal career dealing with land use issues, so I know what a use is, and it's clear that there is a non-conforming use there of some sort that will continue. It's, the question is, what is the non-conforming use? And I don't think that you have sufficient information as to what was there when the Spangs owned it and operated it. That's one. And two, you have information as to what the applicant is advertising and what he in fact has on the site when you look at the park units. And they're very pretty, but they're not what was there before, and they're not, they're not mobile. They're not on wheels. They have skirts on them and additional rooms. And as Vern indicated at the, my first question, that the sunrooms and decks and so on, the majority of them were permitted between 1998 and 2003. That's really long after the zoning ordinance, so was that an expansion then? The fact that Spang operated it after the zoning ordinance doesn't bind you to say, "Oh, that's what was there when Harrington bought it." No, it's, did Spang expand the non-conforming use? The applicant cannot rely on that expansion.
Could I ask the applicant to comment on this thought that the park models are not on wheels, that they're not registered as RVs? That's contrary to what was reported earlier.
Yeah, no, they are on wheels. The wheels are left on them. They have to be. They are RVs.
Mr. Driver, are you, you have evidence to contradict that? They're not on wheels?
The wheels are there.
Oh. Are they registered as RVs?
We have to pay extra times.
Each year?
Yeah.
That was my understanding, that these are RVs.
They are.
The state agrees that they're RVs.
It's a park model. It's an RV that has a deck and a sunroom. And if you go into them, you go into the main unit, and it's just as if it was a sunroom on your house. You then have a way of cutting into the sunroom from the house, and the sunroom and the deck have to be supported somehow. They are not on wheels.
I understand. Thank you.
You know, the Spang piece is interesting. I'm neighbors with a few. I think they're a great family. And I don't, you know, I guess my takeaway is, a lot of people have done a lot of things to try to paint a clear picture as to what happened there, what was there, and the images are, they're sort of different paintings on the wall. And, and I get that. I think everyone has, has tried their best in both sides in an honest way to explain, you know, what, what was there or what they perceived to be there. I don't know, you know, my thing, what, you know, from my opinion, I just look to say, have people done their due diligence? Have they given us what we've asked for if it was available? And I feel, I feel pretty comfortable with what's been provided from both sides. You know, the other, the models, I've been in one. I was on a fire call there last year. It was in the middle of the night. They're nice from what I could see with the light that was on, but the point I'm making, and it's, it's not in defense of, but we were there for a CO detector and a stove was left on, and I would venture to guess that 15, 20 years ago, there wasn't a CO detector and, you know, so, yeah, they're nice. Times change, and I, that could have saved a family's life that night. So, I, you know, when I look at what's there or as time, what things, how things change over time, some good things happen. So, just, I wanted just to make a comment on that. There might be other comments.
Are we done with the public hearing or?
I was going to ask if there was anyone else that wanted to.
Yeah, obviously, it's grandfathered, but the expansion of use hasn't, for me, been settled yet. And even the buildings and the pavement they're asking for is an expansion of use under the ordinance, so we have to sort of justify that. Is it because they're taking away 24 grandfathered lots? I don't know. But, and then the other thing is, Amy did, our hard-earned taxpayers' money has gone to Amy's expertise here, so we should take advantage. She asked us to.
It's on their dime.
They're paying for it.
Okay.
Nonetheless, we love that you're here.
We love having her here.
Thank you. She did ask us to look at the simple question, has the character expanded? Is it different? And I think the kayak thing is the same from what I've heard. The alcohol and the food is probably the same, but the board, I think, we, I think we have to like maybe take a vote. Has the character changed or not at some point?
We have to close the public hearing first.
So, that was, so my plan was to ask if anyone else from the public wished to speak, and then we would engage in some discussion.
Okay.
I will mention, Mark, and you've raised some great points, a lot of the discussion around the pavement and some of those other items occurred at previous meetings, and there was a lot of discussion from folks around impervious soil and coverage and is pavement included in the 5,000 square feet and things of that nature. I don't have it all in front of me, but, so I'll, I'll ask if, if anyone else from the public or butters wished to speak.
Russ, can I address an issue? I just wanted to talk about the discussion here. You know, Mark, you're saying, should we put it to a vote that, you know, as to whether the essential character of the, of the pre-existing use has changed? And I think one way to look at this is, I mean, you could take a vote on that, but another tool that I think you have available to you is to place reasonable conditions of approval if you, I'm not presuming that you will approve, but for example, someone has mentioned they're advertising X, Y, and Z activities, yet they haven't shown that those activities were present on the site beforehand. So, if, if that's the case, and you don't have to do this, but I think the planning board has available to it the ability to say, you know, we would like, either we would like more evidence on this or no, no activity X may occur on this site because we don't have adequate evidence that, that that activity was grandfathered. You know, similarly, if, if some sunrooms and porches were, were added after the ordinance was adopted and permits get granted, sometimes they get granted in error, that happens, but does that become a grandfathering issue? Not necessarily. I mean, the issue is, does the applicant gain the benefit of the fact that permits may have been granted in error in the past when it comes time to deciding how many sunrooms and decks and porches and things are on the various units? So, I'm just, there's no one way to do this. I just wanted to just mention that the conditions of approval that you craft are not limited, obviously, to the ones that the applicant has put in their memo and that you can do a number of things.
I would like to talk about that a little bit more, but I'd like to do it after the public hearing has, has completed. Yeah. Ralph, did you have something?
Yeah, just briefly, just to respond to some of the comments.
Yeah, just briefly, just to respond to some of the comments, either from the public or from the board. And I'll start with Mark's comment about whether or not the character has changed. And Amy had a very key word when she responded. It's not whether the character has changed, it's whether the essential character of the use has changed. This, and I've said it in my memo, this was a seasonal campground. It remains today a seasonal campground. A number of the cases that the courts have had on grandfathering have said that modernizing an operation is not an expansion of that non-conforming use. We're not relegated to use the exact same type of tent that was available in nineteen eighty-five and use that in two thousand and sixteen. We're not expected to have the exact model, if you could even find it, of a, of a camper that existed in the seventies or eighties and use that in, in two thousand and sixteen. We do not believe that the essential character of the campground has changed. Adding the paving, we see as not an, again, it's not an expansion of the use. We're not bringing more people in. We're making it safer for people to come in, but just adding that pavement doesn't bring more people in. And Amy actually had a comment about the facts of Frost v. Lucy, where the court found it inappropriate, that where everything was for guests of the inn or hotel, and then they wanted to do something that would bring people from the outside in who weren't staying there. We're not doing that. You know, that general store is only for people who are at the campsite. You know, you can't just bop in and buy a six-pack and leave. You have to be a camper to do that. So again, we don't believe that, and that's really what we're talking about, is what's the essential character, what, what that use was and what it is today. And to us, it still remains a seasonal campground that is being upgraded and modernized, but no additional sites, in fact, a reduction of sites.
Thank you. I'll, so I'll ask again if there are any members of the public or abutters who wish to speak. I forget, it's been a long one, I'm kinda tired. Is this a motion to close the public hearing, or do we just close the public?
Just close it.
The public hearing is closed. Sometimes I do things and you correct me, so I often.
You check.
Thank you. Okay, so the public hearing has, has closed. So I guess I'll look to the board. I, I think that we, that, that we should continue with some deliberation. My thought was that, so again, continued deliberation, there might be some questions. But my, my plan for next steps would be to discuss sections of, of, you know, the land use ordinance and, and get a sense from the board as to what their opinions are. And that could come out in the deliberation, but then to, to go through the guidelines for decisions potentially, one by one, and talk through those and, and get a sense from the board on, on each one of those. Any other thoughts on how we advance the discussion or advance this agenda item?
I think the other aspect is what Amy talked about on, you know, making sure exactly what the finding of facts is gonna look like.
Sure.
Because that's, it's not gonna be just a simple, hey, we approve it, go ahead, sign, you know, it's, it's gonna be a, a more complex item.
Right.
And there may be additional conditions.
Yeah.
And so that we need to talk about that also.
Yeah, and, and I guess as, I was, I was thinking the same thing. So at, at, at the conclusion of the deliberation and reviewing ten-ten, if, if it turns out that the board is in favor of approval, then I, I do think, and maybe there's an order there, but conditions should be discussed as well.
Yeah.
So that we have some that were provided from the applicant, but I wanna make sure that the board has an opportunity to, to talk through some of those if they have particular items.
Yes.
Does that sound all right for you? What are you thinking?
Yeah, I, I think there, there are a couple of specific concerns, like the ones that Mark had and so forth, that should be discussed pretty thoroughly. There are a couple of things that I, I just wanted to say that are really irrelevant to our decision, like you brought up lighting and, on Route nine and so forth, and that's just out of our purview. Okay, that's nothing we can address. That would go to the Board of Selectmen, I think, or maybe Warner could take it to them, you know, as, as a safety issue. But we can't dictate that the applicant go out on Route nine and put up lighting. I mean, the Highway Department would have a little, you know, consternation about that, so.
Does the game plan sound okay, in terms of some article discussions and?
Yeah.
Okay. So with the public hearing now being closed and with a lot of good discussion, Mark, I'll start down on your side. You had some additional questions and things that you wished to discuss. Why don't we have some deliberation there?
So are we looking at sort of a, I won't say horse trading, Ralph? To make it as non-conforming, is the board thinking that this reduction in sites is gonna offset the expansion in terms of the buildings and the pavement?
Can I, can I comment on, on that? I think that it might be helpful if we could specifically list what I think are four or five specific cases where the site, the existing site is legally non-conforming.
In terms of its use?
In terms of which articles it does not conform to. And if I just read them to you, I think you'll, you'll see where I'm going with this.
Like lot size and stuff?
For, for example, right. So the first one is its use, right? It is a campground. Today, that's not allowed in the Goose Rock zone. So you're not, and we're not proposing, no, no one's proposing to change that. It, it is a campground. There's been some discussion that says, maybe there's things that are going on that shouldn't go on at a campground, and, and we can talk about that. But that's one, and probably the major non-conformance. Wouldn't happen today. The second one is that Article seven-three-A-one says that if you're gonna have a campground, and I know you can't have one in Goose Rocks, but you could have one in another zone, could even be in the shoreline zone, but if you're gonna have one, you have to have enough property so that you have to have five thousand square feet per campsite. This site is non-conforming in that respect, if you accept the three hundred and twenty-four campsites pre-existing. There's a proposal on the table that the changes would eliminate that non-conformance, that aspect of non-conforming, non-conformance that the property has. The existing lot coverage in the shoreline zone is forty-three and a half percent. Twenty percent would be conforming. There's no change. None of the changes are affecting that number. It's gonna be the same before and after if this is approved. So, so that the site will still be legally non-conforming as a grandfathered issue. If you built a campground today, you'd have to have a hundred-foot setbacks from the property lines of any of the structures of any of the campsites. That's not true in general around the site. In addition, you'd have to have a twenty-five-foot visual screen required on the property lines. That's not uniformly true, although many of the property lines are screened. In one area where it's not, and there is activity being proposed, changes being proposed, the applicant is proposing to add a visual screen. So I think it's a step in the right direction, plus any of the structures that are being proposed are gonna conform to the hundred-foot setback, the new ones. Not gonna move any old buildings. Not gonna move any old campsites, although I was just, I just heard tonight that one or more of the campsites that were close to the property lines are among those being discontinued. Looked to me like it was an effort. The last one is, is that there are, there's a requirement that you can't have a tent, trailer, RV permanently left in place at a seasonal campground. You can't shut off the campground at, in October, and we'll, we'll just leave these things here, and we'll pick them up again in June. That's not the case. Everything has to be removed if you, if you built one today. We understand that historically, seventy-six, site, up to seventy-six permanently left RVs were, were at the site. And there's nothing in the changes that are proposed that would affect that. So it's not gonna be reduced, and there's at least a concern that we document that, and we'll request tonight to say where those sites were. So those, those are the specific non-conformances as I read the land use ordinance.
Well, there's one other, just buried in that same section, that says, each RV tent or shelter site shall be provided with a trash receptacle and fireplace.
Right.
Do the glam sites have fireplace? I mean, I, I just don't know.
We were told they shared one.
Yeah, um, last season, they did not, because there was fear of, you know, fires in the tents. So there was a common fire area. I believe this year, they, they had enough people that wanted them, that they're gonna set a fire pit for each glam tent, but very carefully.
Not in it, but in front of.
Exactly, in the front, where it already has a scene.
Oh, you would say prob, and what about all the other sites?
They all have fire rings.
They all have fire rings and, and trash receptacles?
I don't think, there's trash receptacles at the main entrance as people leave, that's where they end up, but there's not trash receptacles at each site that I'm aware of.
That's a non-conformance with that item.
Tom, I, I didn't read it to say that each site had to have its own, and it couldn't be shared.
I suppose, shall be provided with a trash receptacle. Oh, it's over there, okay.
Yeah.
But are, I mean, are there trash receptacles?
There's trap, there's, my, and I've only been, I haven't looked at the whole site, but there, the primary one is, is up here at the entrance, and just being there when people are coming and out, that one gets used, and they're always empty, that one. There may be other ones in the site, like near the bathhouses, I'm sure there's receptacles there. And then they have staff that goes around, you know, several times a day cleaning all that up.
Okay, I'm not convinced I understand what this requirement is for, but.
Yeah. There's not trash laying all over the place, I'll tell you that. They, they are very good at picking all that up.
So, and I think that's a great way to look at it. So with Article seven-three campgrounds, things that the applicant has done within that space has been sort of for goodwill, because it's, a campground's not allowed, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but if you're gonna have one, then.
If you're gonna have one, right. And so the reason it's here tonight is the, the non-conforming use, you know, the, and so, and that's, you know, that's the one that I see here. You know, if you look at eight dot eight-A, you have expansions. Expansions of non-conforming uses are prohibited, except that non-conforming residential uses may, after obtaining a permit from the planning board, be expanded within existing residential structures or within expansion of such structures in shoreline zones as allowed above. And then the change of use, which I think was discussed earlier, so. So I think those, those are good areas to, to focus. Is there additional, so you covered some points, and there were some comments. Are there additional comments around, you know, the, the points around Article seven and the, the offers made?
The definite, in the definitions, it doesn't make sense to me, but it does say that if you increase the ground area, it increases the use. It's an expansion of use. So by paving or putting in the buildings, by the definition, it's saying that it's an expansion of use. It doesn't make sense to me, because I see use and physicalness as two different things.
Well, the, the definition here on, on seven-three-A-one is total area of blah blah, not including roads and driveways. So roads and driveways are specifically not included in the area. So I think the fact that they're.
But it also says.
Increasing them slightly.
When there's a conflict, you go with the stricter one. Expansion of use. One or more months of use. The use of more floor area or ground area devoted to a particular use. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, you're talking in terms of a site, not a use.
But it.
Trying to think of the term for it.
They're, they're defining expansion of use. That's the, I looked up expansion of use.
Yeah.
And that's in the definition of that.
Okay.
So it says, the addition of one or more months to a use's operating season, and that's not happening. Or the use of more floor area or ground area devoted to a particular use. And it would seem that with a reduction of sites, it would be a reduction of ground area devoted to camping.
Right.
See Article eight for specific standards and exemptions.
I'm just bringing it up.
Okay, so that's why you're looking at trade-off?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, consider that the board can allow some expansion of use. And one reason for adding the paving is to make the road safer and to get people off Route nine in case they back up. So.
Oh, I understand.
So that's something where we're looking at a safety issue, which could be a major issue for allowing an expansion of use. The buildings are a different story.
Do we, do we wanna move on to Article ten-ten? Sound okay? So my thought was.
Obviously, the first one is the, the whole, the whole wax, so.
But I think, you know, this is a, with a matter like this, we, it would be worthwhile going through them all. Borrow these findings, because they're clearer. And so what I'd like to do here is go through each, each within Article ten-dot-ten-dot-one, oh, ten-dot-ten-A, and then A-B, all the way down through, I think it's T or something like that. And just get a sense from the board, if you think it's either a, a negative ruling or, or it's positive or not applicable. And I guess before we go or jump into this, and, and, so, Mark, we certainly want your opinions and how you feel about each one of these, but we had talked about.
Yeah, I was gonna abstain.
The voting members, oh, okay, so.
I missed two meetings of this.
Yeah. But I just wanted to make sure we touched upon that. Okay. So, yeah, Tom, the first one.
Maybe we should look at the others first.
Well.
First one is sort of the, the whole, the whole.
I just assume, let's, let's start from the top. So, you know, for.
So you guys have done great tonight with using the microphones, and I know it's getting late, but just remember to keep using those microphones as we get near the end.
Thank you.
We're trying.
Well, here, we'd have to, in A.
Was it A?
Yeah. We'd have to find in the ordinance where it says we can authorize an expansion of use of a non-conforming property.
If you believe it's expansion of use, right?
Yeah. So we'd have to say Article seven point, or eight-point-eight, whatever says that we are allowed to.
I, I would, I would challenge that, Mark. Could you ask the same thing a different way? Wouldn't we have to say where there is an expansion of use?
No, where? Where, where is it that authorizes us?
I, I, I don't think we are authorized to allow an expansion of use, but I don't think one is being requested.
Non-conforming.
Oh, in eight-one, it says you can't allow an increase in non-conforming use.
Right.
That's true. I, I don't think we are allowed.
Okay.
To, to accept an increase in a non-conforming use.
Because the use basically is the use as a campground, and we're not increasing the site, increasing the number of campers, okay?
Just the safety.
Yeah, we're just looking at safety.
The, the.
Change of the building.
The five or six ways that it's nonconforming, right?
Right. We are making--
We're making neither the same, or less.
Never going to move it to the farm and forest zone, so.
Yeah, and I mean, that's a touchy situation, right? It's--
But if you could.
The crux of it.
The crux is, is it's nonconforming in use. And so I think you start there. The things happening that are, that relate more to Article 7 and campgrounds are, I think, you know, offers and gestures to say, so yes, we're talking about a nonconforming use. It's a grandfathered campground and it remains a grandfathered campground. But for those who have concerns, the land use ordinance that's in place today says a campground must, and it lists, and there have been offers in that space. So I think you were getting at it. Like, so the crux of the piece, you know, at the top is, is it's nonconforming because of its use. It's a campground in the Goose Rock Zone. Is it more nonconforming in use?
Well, it's nonconforming in lot coverage. And these--
But they didn't change that.
These additions would make it more nonconforming. So that's--
No, that'll make it less conforming because they're dropping sites out.
Well, I didn't say that. I didn't think that was--
I haven't seen that. Mark, can you be more specific about what it is that your concern is here with respect to lot coverage?
It's nonconforming as to lot coverage, right?
Forty-three percent right now--
In the shoreline section.
In the shoreline zone, rather than the 20% that's required.
So wouldn't the addition of the pavement and the buildings make it more, make there more lot coverage?
None of that is in the shoreline zone.
Okay.
And they've taken site out of the shoreline zone, basically, so that they've made it less nonconforming.
Okay.
So that's the shoreline zone.
Okay.
It would be nice if they take all the sites out of the shoreline zone.
That would be great.
That wouldn't affect the lot coverage, though.
Okay. So as folks here, or most folks here know, but others that may happen to be watching may not know, is that there are guidelines for planning board decisions. And those are in the land use ordinance, Article 10 dot 10A. And the planning, it says right here that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings, which would otherwise compel denial. And so when we make decisions, whether it be a dock or something other, maybe relatively minor, or something like this, we have to go through each one of these. It's A through P, so.
But like A would, like in the findings that you read earlier, A would include 5.11 for the docks. So A does include the rest of the ordinance.
Right. Yeah, so the proposed use meets the definition or specified requirements set forth in the land use ordinance. And it will be in compliance with applicable state or federal laws, right? So it references the land use ordinance.
But as legally nonconforming is--
In its use.
In its use.
So.
But if you look at all the things that it's pointed out and you go through them one by one to see how the conformance has changed, basically, you know, in terms of the acreage per site, that's gone up to conformance. The shoreline coverage hasn't changed, so it hasn't become more nonconforming. The setbacks and visual screening, they've become more conforming. They haven't changed anything except for the better. No permanent structures? Well, there's seventy-six, we think, that are grandfathered in, and they're staying at seventy-six. They're adding fire pits to the site, so you know, you have that and you have your trash receptacles. The only thing you sort of look at is, you know, in terms of the zoning and so forth, and you're looking at the lot coverage in terms of the building expansions, moving the buildings and making them a little larger. Well, the moving wouldn't change the conformance unless they went into the setbacks or changed something like that. But you have to look at the buildings in terms of use. It's not, the use is as a campground and the number of sites has become more conforming. Okay? So, you know, in looking at that in terms of, you know, they're modernizing a campground. They're making better buildings, making it easier to use it. Is that really a change in conformance, a change in use? I mean, my opinion is that, I've looked at it and I've gone through it, that doesn't change anything. You know, it's still saying a seasonal use. Okay. The RVs, whether they can be easily moved or not, are really mobile units. They're licensed as mobile units. We have to take it at that, that they're not going to be used. And we can put the, in a condition in there that they are not to be used outside of the season. You know, I think that's one of the things that ought to be in there. I don't see a change in character of the use. 10.10A1 is the most important, relevant, I think you're in here. I don't see a change in character of use. It's still being used as a campground. People are changing a lot the way they're camping. They may be getting in different people in terms of that, but you're still getting in basically the same people. You're not trying to increase the density by adding RVs. I've never seen, you know, people come in in RVs. They still come in as couples or as families in tents or as families in RVs. I don't think you could statistically say there's a change there. You're changing the density. You can put a condition in that after nine o'clock, there's no, there's, there's no-- the problem is you have all this stuff in front of you.
I was thinking the same thing on the drive over here today.
The problem is that, you know, and I've lost my train of thought. The problem is that, or one of the conditions you could put in there to prevent a change in character of use is not to allow anything to go on after nine o'clock, like bands of music and things like that. Like they did in Frost and Lucy, basically, saying that that would be a change in the character of the use, which might disturb the neighbors around them. So that's one way to look at it. I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that.
Good points.
Yeah. Having been in campgrounds, I would say I'd rather they didn't have it if I was in the campground. Wouldn't like to have stuff going after nine.
Yeah, you don't want to hear noisy people when you're trying to get your kid to sleep.
To me, the test should be not, not what did Spang do, but what would we normally expect a seasonal campground to do? And if, you know, quiet hours are normal, then quiet hours. But I think this business of worrying about what exactly went on at the previous, over the past thirty years, doesn't seem to fit what I'm understanding that the case law has been. You're allowed to make your business more desirable for people to come and use it.
So I think we should, we can bring that into discussions when we talk, or if we talk. Conclusions or conditions?
Conditions.
It's starting to slow down. But so specific to 10.10A, and, you know, the proposed use meets the definition or specific requirement set forth in the land use ordinance, will be in compliance with applicable state or federal laws. Is anybody here have a negative finding or think, would you vote no there? Or maybe better yet, should I, and just for a sense from the board, should I just ask those that would check yes, raise your hand? Those that would check no, raise your hand?
Where yes is what we, the ones we just read, not the way that stupid ordinance is--
Nonbinding or, nonbinding or for the record, just?
For the record, yeah.
Do you feel okay?
Yeah, I could go along.
We're doing something in the nature of a straw poll.
Straw poll on each, in 10.10.
As opposed to a final vote, is that what you're questioning?
Yeah, that was my question.
I'm not hearing you saying this is a final vote.
Yeah. We want to see, because we always write, most of our findings of facts are written exactly opposite of the ones--
I know, and I was cheating with you.
Yeah, can I make a small point about that with Amy here? It's mine, or it's a pet peeve of mine, that our findings of fact, the ones we read tonight, are this with a checklist. We check off yes or no, and there's no explanations after each one. It's fine. We're doing it right now. It's a good worksheet to have. But as a finding of fact that we do in the final form, to me, it's a little stilted. You know, it's literally a yes/no with an X.
Well, the worksheet may say yes/no, but I would encourage you to discuss why, if there's a, you know, if you feel there's a consensus on a particular standard--
Can you show her?
Why it is you feel that. And then, you know, then that would be captured in the factual findings. I would encourage you not to just say, yeah, yes.
Take a look?
Yes, because. Yeah, that's a worksheet. I understand. And there isn't a lot of room to actually list the findings. And I think Ed is doing a good job of manly taking notes.
Yeah.
And I'm doing the best I can to try to capture what the board is discussing. But you're right, the worksheet itself doesn't leave a lot of room for the discussion that you're going to be having on each standard. And I don't think you're limited to, I think it's helpful to go through each standard. Some of them may not even apply. But if the board wants to have a, you know, more comprehensive discussion afterwards or before at any point, I don't see a reason why you couldn't do that.
I don't see fire hazard as an issue. The next one?
I'm sorry, what was the result of the first one?
Yeah, so I'll read it from, this is going to twist my brain, but I'm going to read it from the land use ordinance. And then, so it says, "The proposed use does not meet the definition or specific requirement set forth in this ordinance, or will not be in compliance with state or federal laws." So if anyone here believes that it does not meet the definition set forth, or it will not be in compliance, raise your hand. Okay. So those, raise your hand if you do believe the proposed ordinance does meet the definition or specific requirement set forth in this ordinance, and will be in compliance with applicable state or federal laws.
Yeah.
Straw poll, okay. And I'm all for speeding things up because we have forty-five minutes and two other folks on the docket, and we're not supposed to open things up after ten.
No pressure.
And I'm reading things twisted. So for B, fire safety hazards, would anybody here, does anybody believe this will create fire or safety hazards?
No.
No. Okay. So I'm going to say five zero there.
Right.
On C, "The proposed exterior lighting will create hazards to motorists traveling on adjacent public streets, or is inadequate for the safety occupants of the users of the site, or will damage the value and diminish usability of adjacent properties." There's no lighting being proposed in the three, in the three areas here?
N/A.
So I think that's an N/A, lighting.
Actually, I think there is some small lighting that is being proposed. There certainly is at the bath house, but it's local to the site. It's nothing out on the road or anything like that.
So I don't think it creates a hazard. Maybe, are you okay with N/A?
Right.
Okay.
N/A.
On D, "So the provisions for buffers in onsite landscaping do not provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development." So does anyone believe that what is being provided does not provide adequate protection to neighboring properties?
It's--
It's okay.
I think they're making it better. But it's grandfathered, if they don't quite achieve that, so.
So this would be, people believe, is it like a five zero, yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
So just a discussion of, maybe a reminder, maybe you already know, but what are the buffers that are being provided? Because I think--
As you find your factual findings, you'll want to--
The only buffer that is being provided is an evergreen buffer that's going in the area that is now being paved.
You're the park model.
It's the grass, behind the grass, park model. That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the board understood that.
They eliminated the site that was actually right on the--
So when that one's written out, we can add, they're adding these first or whatever they are.
Evergreens too, yeah.
As shown on the site plan. That's all I know.
Yeah. Okay. E, "The proposed use will have a significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of a budding property as well as a result of noise, vibrations, fumes, odors, dust, glare, or other cause." I don't believe so.
That might be something we put in conditions if we--
Right. That's where the conditions would come in, nothing after nine and so forth.
Sure.
So I understand the desire to impose a condition there. And some of the people that spoke at the public hearing were on that point. I guess I would ask Amy this question. It seems to me that the changes that are being proposed in and of themselves do not appear to be, need to be addressed by anything on this, on this point. There's nothing that's being proposed that would, that would give me concern about noise, vibrations, fumes, odor, dust. If you step back and you say, I'm going to put a campground in here, then yeah, maybe I have that concern. But that doesn't seem to be the matter before the board.
Right.
Anything fumes-wise, they're improving things because they got this extra lane.
I wanted to say that Steve mentioned there'd be signs there, no idling engines.
Right.
Right, that's right. It's--
We did.
So maybe I have to take back what I said, that maybe one of the things that's being proposed might have given you pause. It said, oh, I'm adding a lane where people are going to idle. Oh, we'll take care of that with a sign. Okay, all right.
And so is it, is it the sense that a five, oh, folks believe that?
Yes, I think it's--
Okay. So with F, "The provisions for vehicular loading and unloading and parking and for vehicular and pedestrian circulation onsite and onto adjacent public streets will create hazards to safety."
I think they're, again, improving that.
I think they're improving that, so they will not.
Right.
So folks believe, does everybody believe? Yeah, okay. And maybe there's a notation there, the pull-off in the parking. I think there's even a walkway on the opposite side now that was allowing people off, off the roadway.
Correct.
Okay.
It's helpful to provide those specifics and the factual findings. That's great.
Thank you.
You're going to help with that, right?
I am, but you know the details of the application more than I, so that's why I've been saying--
At least as an editor, though, and a critic.
I'd be happy to help.
Okay, that'd be great.
Certainly what I'm hearing as well is that, you know, as you're going through this, the implication is that there's specific language that's going to be in each line of the findings that speaks to that, except in the ones where you referenced not applicable.
Tying the rationale--
That's how we should do every application.
So not just that the vehicular loading and parking issue is improved, but how is it improved?
Right, right.
What are the things in the site plan that are being proposed that are improving those things, if that's what the board feels?
Yep. So G is, "The proposed use will have a significant detrimental effect on the value of adjacent properties, which could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan." My sense is that these are, these are improvements being made. There's a buffer. If I'm thinking about detrimental effect, it's models, cars won't be on the street, or--
Well, also a reduction of the campsites.
Reduction of campsites. So does, do folks, is this like another five O thing?
Yes.
Yes.
So for H, "The design of the site will result in significant flood hazards or flood damage, or is not in conformance with applicable flood hazard protection requirements?" I don't know, is it there's anything--
N/A, it's not applicable.
--that would create a flood hazard? There's a site being removed that's close to the water.
I think it's N/A.
Yeah.
It would be N/A, except that we don't know what the applicable flood hazard protection requirements are.
It doesn't appear to me that there's anything that's proposed that's occurring within the flood hazard, that's occurring within the flood hazard area.
More comfortable with like a five O thing as opposed to N/A?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Sounds right.
Yes, with-- Yes, with the concern that we're talking about being, adding rationale for why we think that we're definitively saying that this isn't a problem. What is it that we're doing, or what is it that we've considered? Oh, maybe what we've done is we've considered that it's not because no changes are being made inside the flood zone.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Something that you do run into in different FEMA standards related to, you know, if you're creating a campground in a flood zone, there are guidelines and restrictions regarding what you have to do if you have campers that are there on, that are there on a regular basis. And in most cases, it's really, it's, those items need to be, they need to be able to be removed quickly.
Evacuation.
That's right, you know, more in terms of evacuation policies.
This is not in a flood zone, correct?
No. Well, there's a portion of, a portion of it that is within the flood zone. You know, a reasonable, you know, I think a reasonable condition, and maybe the board's gonna get to this, but where there's discussion about where the park model sites are not, are or aren't, I think a reasonable condition could be that none of those, none of those sites be located within the flood zone.
And I think those were being called not necessarily park model sites, but...
Seasonal sites.
Seasonal sites.
So I, "Adequate provision has not been made for disposal of wastewater or solid waste or the prevention of ground-surface water contamination." I think it's not part of this application, but the improvement of the septic tanks and the addition of a bathhouse.
Coupled with the requirement, we're gonna put them on for annual monitoring.
Right. So this sounds like it's one where folks feel that it will, five oh, and that the comments there, or the supplemental information there would be the septic, the bathhouse, and the annual inspection of the septic. So for J, "Adequate provision has not been made to control erosion or sedimentation."
I'm not sure we address that.
The best manager.
I was gonna say, in the site plans, the last page or two talks about how during the construction, the different quar barriers are constructed and all of that, which I think is normally best management practices. It seemed like, I'm seeing the same things in here that I'm seeing on all of the well-done proposals that have come by.
So is this something that we unanimously believe is okay? And there's an example there? What was that, yeah?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you what page, but it's in the last page.
Okay.
Help us, Steve, then I won't have to look it up.
Is this the proposed condition of approval?
No, I think it's a rationale for why, it's a rationale for why we're saying that this is, or we're comfortable with this.
I think you could say that, you know, the plan shows erosion control measures and that there is an erosion control plan in the plan set.
Okay, well done.
On K, "Adequate provision has not been made to handle storm water runoff or other drainage problems on the site."
It's probably in the same plan.
Is there a stormwater plan in there?
I would say that would probably be on the grading plan. You reference the grading plan shows...
Grading?
Grading plan.
I was hearing my last name.
Yeah, I think, I would just say there's several sheets, there's...
Yeah.
Okay. So this drawing shows the grading, and then the, also, this sheet, there's a grading plan appropriate for that.
Okay.
That shows how the stormwater is being handled.
Okay. So again, a board unanimous decision, okay.
Yeah.
So once again, we're only really talking about areas one, two, and three, which is only not full site.
L, "The proposed water supply will not meet the demands of the proposed use or for fire protection purposes." I'm inclined to think say N/A.
Oh, not as part of this, not as part of this.
Not part of this application.
Some people raised the question of whether the, the main up there was adequate. But, you know, they only put in what, a half inch, or I forget the number.
Oh, from Dyke Road up to the property, it's a smaller main, but it's because it's seasonal, and it's not, yeah.
So on the one hand, you're reducing the number of sites, but we made, we made an assumption early on that the same population was going to be using this. That's how you, we designed the septic system that way, is what we heard.
I assume that Kennybunk, Kennybunk, Kennybunk Fort Wells Water has approved this connection to the site, so. We don't know better than them.
But we're adding a bathhouse, and I think one of the conditions here is already been handled, but it's that that bathhouse has commodes, but it doesn't have showers. You're not, you're not putting an increased demand on the water supply by adding a half a dozen showers.
Yeah.
Correct?
It's the same number of people, it's just making it more convenient for them time on.
Or I guess, yeah, or maybe what I think...
I've read the materials to say that the new bathhouse does not have showers.
Right.
I've heard the same thing.
That's correct, but as Nina says, you're not increasing the population, so.
I wasn't comfortable in my own head accepting that to say. If I have to stand in line for a shower, I'm not taking one, okay? But now, now, I have the new luxury bathhouse, and I can go take a long luxurious shower. Sorry, you can't. So I liked that rationale better.
That works.
That was just me.
But I guess you could also state that demand has been reduced because the number of sites has been reduced. Yep.
That'd be a fair statement.
So do folks, similar?
Peak demand, yeah.
Okay, same thing. And you have what you need there, Ed?
Yes.
Unanimous, folks, okay. So for M, "Adequate provision has not been made for the transportation, storage, and disposal of hazardous substances and materials as defined by state law."
N/A.
I'm inclined to say N/A there as well.
Yeah.
So everyone believes N/A. N, "The proposed use will have an adverse impact on significant scenic vistas or on the significant wildlife habitat, which could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan."
Actually, it's probably improving by reducing the number of sites. And you don't have to look at as many other human beings.
I would agree.
Yeah, so it's not a problem, so.
So unanimous belief, and then it would add the reduction of sites?
Yeah, I got it, thank you. That's helpful.
O, "The proposed use will cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion." And I would say it's quite the opposite, right?
Right.
Giving room, so does everyone believe that way?
Well, one, the reduction in sites, and two, the improved roadway.
Entry management.
In the site.
And then P, "Existing off-site ways and traffic facilities cannot safely and conveniently accommodate the increased traffic generated by the development as far away from the development as the effects of the development can be traced with reasonable accuracy." And so I guess what comes to mind here is that, that there was, that the discussion was that there'll be no shuttling of people down. Now, that might, you might argue then that, well, more cars are gonna go on the road, but I don't...
I'm not sure that even makes sense.
I was looking at that, too.
Yeah.
That's, I think, if you're increasing the use and you get more intense use and you got more traffic, you know?
That's what I was taking from it.
I almost think it's not applicable, or you're losing sites, you get less traffic.
That's what I would...
Are you comfortable with not applicable?
Yeah.
Or comfortable with saying, hey, less sites, less traffic?
That's what I think we should do.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, now we get the ones that are right, written correctly.
And so that page is, most of it's missing from mine. Do you want, will you take that for me? Where it was probably given to me, and I slipped in a different section.
This is only for the shoreland or RP zone portions.
Well, we have shoreland.
Yes, I know, so we have shoreland and RP, or just RP? Doesn't matter.
There is RP right at the very edge of the property.
For that, planning board shall approve it with conditions if it makes positive findings on all of these things, okay? A, "Safe and healthful conditions." Sure.
Yep.
B, "Will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters."
Real quick on A, does everyone feel okay with that?
Yes.
Well, it'll be better.
I don't see that it's introducing any new unsafe or unhealthful conditions.
It'll be better.
These changes. And again, overriding all of this is the thought that all of the change is happening outside of the shoreline zone.
Right, except for a couple of sites going away.
Being moved, being removed, that's right. And they're coupled, of course.
Right.
So on B, sorry, you take it down.
It's, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation, so we, I think, agree with that.
Yeah. Somewhat repetitive.
C, "Will adequately provide for disposal of all wastewater."
C above.
Yeah.
There's no septic on the, in the shoreline, or in the resource protection.
There's no new septics. There's an existing septic field for this bathhouse here.
Oh, okay.
This, that bathhouse is out of, yeah. This is the only where there's a septic field, so.
Okay. "Will not have adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat." Somebody was saying in one of the many letters we got that people were dragging their kayaks and stuff across the Rachel Carson land.
Yes. They were coming out, there's a kayak launch here.
Yes.
And they were dragging them out to low tide, to the watermark out here.
Okay.
That has stopped, they actually put signs and barricades so that they couldn't do that.
Okay, so...
That happened during the past season.
All right, so we'll probably have to put something about that in that item.
On D?
On D.
Well, it's not part of this application.
I realize it, but it wouldn't hurt putting it in something.
Okay.
Okay. E, "Will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters." My favorite.
N/A?
N/A, yeah.
Okay.
Private property.
Okay. F, "Will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan." Gotta be N/A. "Will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use."
Will make it less likely to happen, taking out sites.
Okay. Is that, is that something where it's like, we, yes, it will avoid problems?
It'll make it less likely to have problems.
Yeah.
Less, yeah.
Okay. Why will it make it less likely?
Because we're taking out sites.
Were you using that a lot?
I'm good.
Twenty-four less sites, yeah.
Okay, anyway. Finally, "Is in conformance with the performance standards as set forth in Article 5.6."
Which is erosion and sedimentation control.
Okay. And there's a plan for that?
Yeah.
Isn't that redundant?
So...
Right, this is just specifically going to the shoreline zone.
And that's it.
All right. So a long exercise, but I think a very helpful one.
Russ, can I, can I suggest a, I'm over here. I know it's late.
I heard you over there. This is terrible.
I'm everywhere.
I thought it was Lori.
There has been a lot of discussion by the planning board about a reduction of sites. And I think it would be appropriate for the planning board to make a factual finding about that, because there has been some discussion. There have, there has been competing evidence, if you will, about the number of sites that has been here. So I think there ought to be some discussion and some factual findings made about, about that.
Yeah, maybe it's along the lines of while there have been various numbers offered, what the number the applicant came to the board with initially has been reduced at the suggestion of the applicant, something like that, or...
Well, I think what I'm getting at is, since you're saying there's been a reduction of sites, I'm assuming that the factual underpinning is that you're assuming that the sites, the number of sites that existed historically on the site exceeded 300, whether it was 324, whether it was 350, whether it was 400. I'm not suggesting there's any one way to find those facts.
Yep.
But if you could comment on the evidence that was, I mean, you're entitled to weigh the evidence and weigh the competing evidence and decide what evidence was more compelling to you, was less compelling to you, and why.
Right.
So a discussion about that might be helpful.
Okay. So I...
Amy, would you, you're talking about discussing it now or including a discussion of it in the findings of fact?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I would offer, from my perspective, I guess first, that there were so many different numbers thrown out or demonstrated online. What I think, what I felt most comfortable with was when the property was sold, that our town, our code office, was there with buyers, and that Steve, as I know him, has done an inspection, and that this number of sites that was brought forward by the applicant is the number of sites that was observed by those people. And so what, it's not to discount or discredit what anyone else has offered, but there seems to have been, where I find there to be the most consistency has been with our code office and with what the applicant presented. And where I've seen inconsistency, it's been on webpages and things of that nature. And even where there has been some inconsistency there, it seems as if, if you take the number advertised and consider what they don't advertise, you fall in that, you come in this general area. And so if it's a site that was licensed by the state, and I know there are big buckets, but licensed for 400, and through the years, there have been many different numbers advertised and as many people possible stuffed in there. When the property was sold, I think that, you know, the process that, that what happened or the process that took place was probably as good as it's ever going to be, unless rules change down the road. So from, so from my perspective, it's, I feel very comfortable with what Warner observed and what Steve has observed, and how close some of these combinations of numbers come to a number near or even above there. And with an offer to reduce to 300, I feel good about that.
I feel very uncomfortable with that. One, because when you first started, you were basing it on how the land was sold, what the sites were when they were sold, and it's, that has nothing to do with us, with us. It's really irrelevant. It's the buyer's due diligence that should have looked backwards to see how many sites were there in 1985 when the land use ordinance was enacted. So I think that's a very, very weak basis on which to base the number of sites we think are there. And Warner's walkthrough basically just tells you what was there after the buyer bought it. I think you could say that the historical data is very confusing, that there's very little evidence... that there's very little evidence, there's nothing forthcoming from the buyer. And after due diligence on the part of the board and evidence brought forward by the applicant and evidence brought forward from the code enforcement office, that a plan was devised basically to come down to a reasonable number of sites as close to historically accurate as possible. I think that would be a better way to phrase it.
Let me, let me add to that. I, I like, Russ, what, what you said in terms of the consistency and the confidence I think we have in, in the more recent estimates by people that we know and trust because of that. So I think that gives us a basis for believing that in recent years, the number has been on or about three hundred and twenty-four and therefore, we are reducing that number. So that, to me, constitutes a reduction in fact. However, as Nina points out, not necessarily a reduction from what was going on in nineteen eighty-five. We, we looked at the Wayback Machine and the internet and, as the internet, you know, tends to be, we got, we got a variety of answers from that, all in a general vicinity, but, but nothing that gave you confidence. I, for one, found it very helpful that you provided an affidavit from people that have reason to have been close to the problem and at this point have no reason to, to make up a story that I, that I could think of. And it seems to corroborate the present day view. So I, I'm comfortable with, with saying that there has been, at least in the short term, a reduction in the number of sites.
I'm curious about this detailed map that was done within the last two years. Was it like a sketch drawing or? What was the map?
Well, I think you're looking at it, you know, I mean, you know, what, what you, you know, what you have in, you know, in.
But he said it's at the town hall.
Well, so what we have, I mean, we have additional sheets that show, for instance, the, you know, the specifics of the utilities, you know, as an example, you know, and I think that's, you know, whenever we talk about a detailed map, that's, that's probably the distinct difference that I see is, you know, there's, it's more of a utility, a utility plan, you know, that, that shows the specific locations of the septic sites, where the tanks are located, you know, where the lines are located, you know, you know, things of that nature. Right. You know, there is the designation of, you know, of what would typically be on that site so that it certainly informed us as we looked at the, as we looked at the, the design flows of the septic, of the septic systems, you know, so that we could, you know, we could corroborate, you know, the number of, the number of sites with the design flows and the subsurface waste code with what was put forward on the, on the HAT two hundred forms for the septic. So that, that's the type of detail that you would see on, on those particular plans.
It just seemed from this memo that we got from Ralph that there was this other, more detailed map that was done, like, on the ground, it said. And we like, looked at this and we counted this and.
That's what's created, that's what created that.
But that's, so this created this, but where's this?
But the, what you have on the site plan that's filed is what's on the initial plan we showed Warner with some additional information that's not relevant to this, as Warner said, the septic lines and, and electrical and things like that. So it doesn't show a different number of sites or a different location of sites.
So does that show three hundred and twenty-four hookups?
Not hookups, sites.
Sites, but the hookups in what you were saying?
Sites, well, yeah, not necess, you know, you had tent sites there that didn't necessarily have, you know, have a hookup to them.
Got it.
Same.
I got it. But I'm more in line with what Nina said. When you hear a low number and a high number, I tend to fall somewhere in the middle. I think historically it's more two ninety, but I'd be okay with three hundred. So I, I'd be okay with not saying there's been a reduction.
Yeah.
Just based on everything I've heard.
It's like splitting the baby. I just wanna.
The previous owner in this affidavit did not say there were three hundred and twenty-four sites, did not say that.
It's not his affidavit. I'm looking for evidence that would be supportable in court.
Right.
Okay, if it ever got challenged. So I, I want the evidence that, you know, we looked at everything and took the most credible things we could. There is no answer. We just made a decision that we hoped would be supported by the community as well as the town, so, and for the applicant.
Well, there's no question it's a reduction of, they're reducing the sites from three twenty-four that they had as of last year's operation to three hundred now.
Right.
That doesn't say that, that the spang organization sometime between nineteen eighty-five and two thousand, whatever, seven or eight, nine, did not do all sorts of interesting increases of use without taking out permits or anything. Really says that what we're doing here is really important and we should have been done in nineteen eighty-five. That would have been really nice to quantify the non-conformances the minute the land use ordinance was passed.
Hindsight is great.
Hindsight is great, yeah, exactly.
Right.
You know, that's a, that's a quandary that we deal with on a regular basis with every property.
Yeah.
You know, and in a lot of cases where, you know, where the record, you know, where records are incomplete or, you know, we don't have any evidence, then, you know, it's, it's been our practice that we, you know, we require documentation that documents what's there. And if it's a reasonable representation in terms of that, then, you know, then we go with that if there's no evid, if there's no other evidence to the contrary, so. But we deal with that on a regular basis, particularly at Goose Rocks as we deal with developed properties and, you know, are looking to get documented numbers for lot coverage and things of that nature. I mean, you just didn't have the documentation or the level of documentation that we ask for now, so.
Okay.
So where are we on this?
So as a matter of procedure, I have a question. We've gone through a straw poll of, of ten dot ten, A and B. There have been a number of different conditions offered and discussed. Do we discuss, do we vote on approval first and then discuss conditions? Or do we discuss conditions and then vote for approval?
I would discuss conditions because the conditions are, I mean, may sway you one way or the other as to whether you approve or deny.
If, if I could suggest, we finish our discussion on the number of lots, sorry, sites, and then take the next two weeks and come up with our own conditions. There's so many of them. And then at the next meeting, kind of like, put them all, agree on all of them. I mean, there's a lot of conditions.
So, so we've mentioned some conditions as we went through. Would it be worth taking ten minutes and trying to enumerate them? Because I don't think there are a lot. I haven't heard a lot. I've heard less than ten.
They might entail discussions.
They might.
It'd be, it'd be more than just listing ten things.
But let's not discuss them, though. What, what are the, the many conditions? Because I'm, I just don't want to go off saying that there's a whole other meeting of this.
So, my sense is that we're not going to finish the Sandy Pines discussion tonight. The public hearing is closed.
We can just continue this to the next.
We might be able to take care of two others. There have been, so I, I agree with Mark in that there were, there are, there might not be a huge number, but there are certainly conditions that were offered by the applicant that are worth discussion. And then I wrote down six or so things that were discussed, such as site limitations or shuttles or seasonal, can't be used off-season, no park models near flood zone. So I, I get the sense that it might be a good idea to open up our next meeting with the limitation of just being focused on conditions of approval and then a vote.
So if I can just, you know, offer a suggestion to that is, you know, so we have Ed as, as case manager for this. And, you know, a, a possible, you know, a possible track is that you could, you could allow him to, you know, create a set of, a set of draft findings that then gets, that gets reviewed and deliberated and maybe modified and added to at the next meeting. But, you know, I think it, maybe then at least at that point, you have a document, you know, you have something that's maybe three quarters of the way there.
Yeah.
You know, already, you know, already put together. And then, you know, at your next meeting, then you can either choose to, you know, you know, you can deliberate the content of that then.
Okay.
If that makes sense. That at least moves you forward and, you know, maybe gets, you know, three quarters of it all or all.
I don't want to get us into an email dump that we've got in the past. So do not, do not send emails to Ed suggesting stuff.
No, no, what, what I, what you would have to do, Tom, I agree with you, is that you'd, would have to say, okay, Ed, go, go put together what you think you heard here.
Yep, and everybody else.
Include the list of the conditions that you heard.
Yep.
I think it could be safely distributed to everybody in advance of the meeting so that they would be able to look at and bring their comments to the next public meeting.
Yes, as long as they don't reply, don't reply, don't send anything back to you.
Yeah, no, I don't want to see them.
Yeah.
Until the public meeting.
That's fair.
That sounds, okay.
Does that sound good?
Yes.
Sound okay?
Amy, are we all set with our determination on the?
One more stipulation. I would, I would like to be able to run that draft by Amy.
Amy will work with you.
Before I distribute it to everybody else.
Yep.
Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. So the public hearing is, or has been closed and we will meet with Sandy Pines at the next meeting to discuss conditions and then ultimately offer a vote. Ed will bring forward draft findings of fact with his observations and notes around conditions and work with Amy to complete that. And then at that next meeting, we'll discuss, we'll have a discussion around that. Do we need to vote? I don't think so.
No.
Okay.
To suspend it.
Okay, cool.
We need to vote to stay, to put these poor gentlemen, finish their, their public hearing with all this publicity here.
Yeah. These are billable hours, no? So, yeah, we'll do our very best. Says we can't start anything after ten, but we can certainly start at nine fifty-nine if, if possible.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, the Goodwin one he has would be wonderful. Warner?
Excuse me?
The Goodwin findings of fact?
Yes, I have those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and here's the, these two. Marked up.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have the third item on the agenda. It's one eight zero one zero two. Deborah Pierce and Bruce Donath. Alan Shepard is the authorized agent. It's a site plan review public hearing for approval to expand the use of the non-conforming single-family dwelling from seasonal into year-round by installing insulation and a heating system. The address is twenty-five Pier Road. It's identified as Assessor's Tax Map thirty, block one, lot seventeen. It's in the Cape Porpoise East Shoreland and Resource Protection Zones. Mr. Shepard, if you would introduce yourself and provide a brief overview of the project.
Okay, my name's Alan Shepard and I'm the representative for Deborah Pierce and Bruce Donath, who are in Florida and are looking at me right now and been watching this meeting and texting with me as time goes on.
They're still awake.
Yes, so this is just asking for approval to allow this to be a winterized property. There'll be no changes on the site. There'll be nothing that will alter the structure other than just being some insulation and the heating system put in. At the last meeting, if you remember, we talked about why we're here.
Yep.
And there is a provision in the ordinance that says any extension of a season is deemed to be an expansion of use. And then the planning board's allowed to consider whether you would allow that. So that's the, the nature of the request.
Okay, okay. Before we open, okay, let's see, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions, comments or questions?
I don't think Bill Walsh has any comments.
There is.
If he does, I'm gonna kick him.
A couple of minutes.
Yeah, so for, for the folks at home, there are no members of the public here and Noah Butters here. But I'll ask, any members of the public who wish to speak? Any Butters wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
So there were some comments, I think, at one of the prior meetings, Tom, about an additional notar or some work to do in the findings of fact.
Yeah, I know work to findings there.
Okay, so.
We still need to approve the.
Yeah. Approved, um, application. So I'll make a motion to approve the application.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Clarify who's voting.
Sorry, everyone but Mark, right? Yeah, because this one came when you were away. Good point, thanks. So all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so at our next meeting, we will read the findings of fact and give them to you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan.
Who did it?
Okay.
Go buy your tent. So the next item on the agenda is one eight zero two zero three. Arthur Levin and Joan Roselis, Roselis, Roselis. Walsh Engineering is the authorization. This is a site plan review public hearing. It's for approval to perform site improvements to their property, including removing and replacing a timber section of retaining wall and repairing an existing riprap seawall. The address is eleven New Biddeford Road. It's identified as Assessor's Tax Map thirty-five, block six, lot one, in the Goose Rocks Shoreland and Resource Protection Zones. Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Walsh with Walsh Engineering. As you said, I'm here on behalf of Arthur Levin and Joan Roselis. Eleven New Biddeford. There, at the bottom, very bottom of this, right here, is eleven New Biddeford Road. This is Beaver Pond Creek that circles kind of around their property. And as you said, we're here to get permission to replace an existing wood, wooden retaining wall that exists along this side and to repair some riprap in this area. I'm gonna show you quickly a photo. It's over here. So there is, this is the riprap along this side. So we're looking actually from the, from the, from the creek back at the house. This is the existing concrete T-wall which will remain and this is the wooden wall which will actually be replaced by a granite block wall along there. We, based on the last meeting and the conversation that we had here, we did check in with the tree warden, Patrick Briggs. We went back and forth via email with him. In the end, Patrick actually said with the poor soils and the compacted ground, he said, I'd suggest you remove the tree and not replace it because I don't think it's gonna survive, which he, he does have a, he does have a bit of a point that the trees are, are a bit of a challenge there to survive. However, with that said, we are going to, I don't think I have the plan. We are going to put shrubbery around here. Presently, there's, there's big juniper bush here in this one tree. We're gonna take that vegetation, put it out on the outside here and replace it with two, two trees. Probably thornless honeysuckle because they appear to, appear to be the most, they, they have the best ability to sort of deal with the salt water that's out there. I do actually have a picture that I'm gonna pass.
So there's nothing basic about honeysuckle that we have all.
No, it is not. This is a picture on. This is a picture on March 3rd of the house.
Wow.
You can see, you can see the flooding that occurred at this house. Basically, the whole house was, was underwater here. It was all flooded, so. With that said, we do have to file a permit by rule, and we also will not expand the impervious area on here, it's gonna remain the same as it is now. We're taking out a little bit of riprap along this edge, and that, we just needed that to make up the difference of the impervious area of the wall, the wider width of the wall, so.
Excellent.
Okay, and you don't have the PBR yet?
We do not have the PBR yet.
Are you sure you shouldn't be growing seaweed there?
Right? Do you see that?
It's a market overseas.
The erosion and sedimentation plan is all set.
It is all set, yes, we'll be, we'll be digging along here, there is some, there's an area here, we do have a detail in our plans, which shows how we'll, how we'll deal with that. Go along here, we're gonna, there's a, a little bit of an area of erosion at the bottom side of the, of the wall. We're gonna put in riprap and then put soil over the top of that and plant it back in along that edge, which is down along the wood wall down at the bottom.
Where is the area of additional stabilization?
It's actually, see if I can show you on the, on the photo. It's, it's kind of along here, and I don't know how well you can see this, but it's, it's at the base of the wall here. It's kind of, it's that transition zone between sort of vegetated and non-vegetated stream bank, but part of this has eroded right along this edge a little bit, so the idea is to be able to put the riprap down at the base of it to be able to stabilize the wall, and then put gravel and soil over the top of that, and then we'll replant that, that base with some core mat, core matting, which is like a straw matting that's made out of coconut fiber, tends to last a couple of years in place and keep that in place while it vegetates.
So where that wooden, where that wooden wall is?
Yes.
The new wall's gonna be in that same exact spot?
It's, yeah, so the back edge of it will be, you know, the back edge of that wall, so we're not going any further, we're, we're keeping that face, it'll actually come in a little bit.
What do you mean, the back edge of the wall?
The stream side, I guess, would be, would be the, would be the back edge.
And that's riprap, right?
The wall itself would be granite, so, and then down at the base of it is. Yeah, what I showed before, has a little bit of riprap. This is the, this is the wall section itself, so these are the granite blocks that come down, and this would be the, would be the stream channel, if you will, right here.
So that's in the same spot as the wooden wall?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes, exactly.
It won't be moved out?
No, no, not going any further, it's, it has to stay in that place, and that's, that's part of the PBR permit requires that we stay at the same location and elevation. But this'll be the stabilization down here at the base of it, which is right here.
Are there any other questions? So I'll open the public hearing, that's what this is. Any abutters or members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. So as a matter of vote on this matter, I wasn't here during the initial, and believe it or not, I did try to watch it on my phone, but it, the buffering was terrible, so I'll abstain, and I think Mark probably would as well.
I was here.
You were here?
Wonderful.
So I'm out.
I, I went through 10-10 on my own and looked, applied it to this, and I don't have any problems with 10-10, A or B.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve the replacement of the wall and with the riprap.
I second it.
All in favor?
All those in favor? Opposed? I'll abstain. Okay.
I did put together a findings of fact, I think it still applies to what we said there, I can read it and see if anybody wants to make any changes.
Sure.
Okay. This is a Kenny Bunkport Planning Board Site Plan Application of Arthur Levin and Joan Rosales, Walsh Engineering Associates Authorized Agent for 11 New Biddeford Road, Kenny Bunkport, Maine. The application is number 1-8-0-2-0-3, dated February 8th, 2018, for site plan approval for improvements at 11 New Biddeford Road, Kenny Bunkport, Maine. Following a site plan review pursuant to the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance in a public hearing held on March 21, 2018, the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board made the following findings of facts, findings and conclusions, and renders the following decision. Findings of fact, one, the owners of the property are Arthur Levin and Joan Rosales, who have an address at 4521 Dellafield Avenue, Bronx, New York, 10471, and I've got a typo in there I need to change.
Don't you always find them when you read them aloud?
Oh, God, do you ever? Okay. The property has a street address of 11 New Biddeford Road, Kenny Bunkport, Maine, 04046, identified as Assessor's Tax Map 35 Block 6 Lot 1 on the municipal Assessor's Tax Maps. Three, the property is located on the Beaver Pond Brook Title Outlet to Beaver Pond River in the Goose Rock Shoreland and Resource Protection Zones. Four, the property consists of approximately 0.16 acres, and I want to put an aside in that, you had .14, and I spoke to Warner, because it wasn't an actual survey, we put in what was in the assessor's card.
Thank you.
Okay. Is legally non-conforming and does not meet the setback requirements of LWO Article 4.17A. Five, the applicants and co-owners, Mr. Arthur Levin, Ms. and Ms. Joan Rosales, who are represented by Walsh Engineering Associates with an office at 1 Karen Drive, Suite 2A, Westbrook, Maine, 04092, here and after the applicant. Is that right?
Take that out.
Okay. Have demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a copy of a quitclaim deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds Book 15576, Pages 0114, and dated March 4th, 2009. Six, the applicants propose to replace an existing 70-foot timber sea wall along Beaver Pond Brook with a granite block wall comprised of 18 inches wide by 24 inch high by 8 foot high, two 10-foot long granite stone blocks maintaining the same length of the existing wall and with an elevation no higher than the 8-foot top existing wall elevation. Seven, the applicants further proposed to reset the existing riprap along the northwest side of the property and remove some of the existing stonework while maintaining the same total impervious lot coverage. Eight, the applicants further proposed to remove the existing juniper shrubs and a pine tree in order to construct the wall. The juniper shrubs will be replaced along the proposed wall to provide similar coverage area, and a new tree or trees will be planted closer to the brook. All plantings will consist of marine-tolerant native species. Nine, the applicants will apply for approval from the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, MDEP, and will begin construction immediately upon receiving the town and MDEP approvals and permits. Ten, the applicant has requested no submission waivers from the requirements of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance. Eleven, the applicant has requested no performance standard waivers from the requirements of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance. Twelve, pursuant to the requirements of Article 10-10A of the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decisions, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings which would otherwise compel denial. Do you want me to go through them all, or can we summarize?
I don't think so, yeah.
Okay. Basically, there was no negative ruling on one of the more identified findings. Thirteen, when a proposed development will be located within the Shoreland and Resource Protection Zones, in addition to the requirements of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance Article 10, the townwide regulations in Article 6, the performance standards for specific activities and land uses in Article 7, approval of the development will also require that the board makes positive findings based on the information presented that the proposed use, A, will maintain safe and healthful conditions, the finding is yes; B, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters, the finding is yes; C, will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater, the finding is yes; D, will not have an adverse effect on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat, the finding is yes; E, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters, the finding is yes; F, will protect archaeological and historical resources as designated in the comprehensive plan, the finding is yes; G, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use, the finding is yes; H, is in conformance with the performance standards set forth in Section 5.6 of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance, the finding is yes. Any negative finding by the board means that the application has been denied. Thirteen, the application is otherwise complete. The conclusions, Article 10-10A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more of the identified findings that would otherwise compel denial, and as noted above, the board makes no such findings. Decision, the site plan application identified is hereby approved. The conditions of approval, if any, pursuant to Article 10.11 and 10.12.1, the applicants pursuant to 1012E shall notify the planning board prior to the transfer of rights to construct an approved project. No assignment or transfer of rights to construct an approved project is valid without prior review and approval by the planning board. Two, the applicants must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the form of a copy thereof attested by the registry of deeds before any permit or permits may issue or before any construction activity may commence. Three, approval of this application is dependent upon applicants receiving a valid permit from the MDEP prior to any construction. Copy of the permit must be filed with the code enforcement office within one week of receipt. Four, the applicant will comply with all terms and conditions of the town of Kenny Bunkport ordinances as well as the MDEP approvals dated March 21, 2018.
Sounded good to me.
Oh, you were all asleep.
I'll second that. All those in favor? You guys are, I, I think in the past we've, we can vote to approve FOF, but maybe not to approve the project. So I'll abstain, just to keep it clear, even though I raised my hand. So great, abstain, findings of fact approved, 5-0.
Okay.
Still signing. So, motion to adjourn?
Not until you've signed all this.
Well, you're right. Amy?
I think we could all use a PBR now.
I immediately thought.
Not until you sign, Tom.
What is that? Oh, Bronx, that's what it was. Start it down there. No, not that one, just those two.
Did Ed raise his hand to leave?
I said, did Ed raise his hand asking to leave? Oh, is there a mission on that front?
Oh, have such legible handwriting.
Too late.
We all set?
It's too, too late to ask for a raise.
By move, we adjourn.
What, a percentage of zero is what?
I'll second that.
All in favor? We're adjourned.
Ed, are you in favor of adjourned?
Did you sign?
Yes.
We're done.
He voted.